Hey, 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 hey. That's your girl D-Love from the South Side. Inglewood for life, Chicago that is. Oh, and I must apologize. I know I'm no apologies. Let me fix my little hair because I don't want nobody talking about it. I don't give a f about it. I got off abruptly yesterday. The client called and wanted to talk on the phone. So I do apologize. I sort of came back yesterday, but not talking. I just said, let me just go home and take care of my business. But I hope all you all had a happy hey ba- hey baby. Hey baby. How you doing, my friend? But I hope everyone had a happy Mother's Day. And I hope it was great. It was beautiful weather for a Mother's Day. Hey, my love. Let's say, let me tell you. Let me tell you. I know people like to use a hint. Let me tell you that. That's why I hate going to city hall meeting. I was, I did talk today. They put us out the meeting because people kept clapping. It was on Martin G. I saw Martin G recording. And I wonder what he gonna say. I'm gonna use his footage to die very. And beautiful Mother's Day. I'm glad you did. But I hear you all in these streets, huh? But that meeting today, the people came out. Listen, and you know the deltas came out. Hey, Shelly. Hey, Shelly. The deltas came, showed up and came out today and more of them coming. So I don't know why they believe Kobe Chapman, older woman Kobe Chapman alone. Hey, made in Texas. Let me turn this down a little. What's a made in Texas? Hold on. How you doing? Hope all is square. I'm gonna bring this up. I'm gonna make sure I don't. I gotta tell somebody thank you. I will tell somebody thank you. I don't know. Somebody, somebody gave me a holler and I didn't get a chance to tell them thank you. One hot second. Hey, the four year. I don't know if y'all remember the four year we did. They told me they needed another five day. Hey Carol, how you doing? Oh, God. I just thought about it. I would have looked this up before. I'm just gonna put it in the chat. How about that when I find it? Okay, so. Today me, oh, that was, who was this? This is, oh, no. God dog it. I got, I got that. When you know better, you do better. Okay, so today's meeting, girls, ladies and gentlemen, and those who are in the chat. First of all, it's funny to me. Like I was at the rally today for all the woman Kobe Chapman. It started at six o'clock. That might need to put some spit on that. Per se, not really. Is that my mode? And you know, we vain. And somebody came up to me and say, I know who you are. And I'm like, oh. And they told me, I was like, somebody, they be in the channel, but they don't really talk a lot. So I appreciate seeing her. She didn't, I don't want, she didn't say about her. I didn't ask if I could say her name. I'm home. Are you home? Okay, good. Hey, happy Mother's. Happy Monday, Lady D. Hey cynical, how you doing? Thankful inspiring message this morning. I needed it and I am going through a season right now. I'm here for you cynical and anything I can do to put a smile on your face or even to make you laugh. I'm here for it. I am here. Oh, here's Miss Mary. Okay, here we gonna go on I N A. Hey Coffee, how you doing? Ain't seen you but a minute. Hold this, we finna go. Oh disclaimer, let's see what this says. Does this mean I can't use this video? Let's say legal description. Hold on, let's read this together. Listen. Well, thank you Coffee. I appreciate that. Oh, shee. Something's not right, y'all. It won't let me share. Oh, duh. And my phone on it. Thank you and happy belated Mother's Day to your mom also. Oh, she had a great Mother's Day. And I hope everyone else in this room had a fabulous Mother's Day. A fabulous Mother's Day. This is me, let's see. I'm just kind of providing educational and for informative purposes only. Okay, hey, made in Texas, how you doing? Wait, my thing is made in Texas. Hold on, I wanna make sure. Yeah, I wanna watch this video with you all. And listen, oh, Martin taped the meet, all the meet. Did you see me talking, girl? I was so nervous, so nervous talking today. Thank you, made in Texas for the three dollar holler yesterday. Okay, we gonna go to Martin G because Martin was all in the, all in it. Let's see. Oh, here I am over here. He were all in my way. Okay, he didn't have, that wasn't a very clear video, was it? Had a wonderful Mother's Day. Okay, let's go to Martin G. Hold on. Oh, yeah. Oh, fifteen minutes ago. Okay, and I left because the police was by my car and I ain't had time to be getting no car out of the house. Okay. Martin G was all in the business, baby. Let me tell you. Okay. I don't know why he couldn't keep that. Can y'all hear? Oh, yeah. I couldn't hear. Why is it, is it my internet? Hey Coffee, oh. They won't talk about that. Okay. At some point they put, this girl right here, she's a treasure. And he said, we would not know, we would not have a treasure report because she had been turning it in. Oh, this is bad video. Oh, these ain't clear. Uh, Chappelle Hooks was all in it, baby. I'm trying, uh, what meeting was it? This was the Harvey board meeting and it was so packed. It was packed like it was daunting. Oh, this is, oh, people clap. He said, he gave them three times to stop clapping. People kept clapping. So he put the people out the meeting. I don't know who else had a better video. Oh, gosh, I don't know. Let's see. Okay. Hey, this is a, this girl right here. She is a Chicago activist. There's a whole group that came out. What, wait, what, for clapping? Yes. This video is horrible. That's me right there. I said, right back down. No, that's not me in it. Let me see, hold on, let me. Okay, hold on. Listen, when they put us out, I made sure to stand right next to that door because I wanted to make sure that I was able to speak. Oh, this is the first time this video had been good. They locked the doors? Yeah, this is not a very good video. Okay, let's see. Okay, let me, hopefully I get to see. And maybe he wasn't in the room when I was talking. No, I was before him. Oh, he was still outside. Oh, see, he was outside, so I don't, I don't have it. Oh, no. I think Ryan Gay. Yeah, this is, normally Martin Johnson's videos are good.
All right, people, I might have to put my phone down, but I'mma hold it, you know?
Yeah. Yeah. By the time Martin came in. He was packed in it. That's the first time I ever seen it grainy. Yeah. Drama is never the no video. Yeah. Let's see, maybe Ryan, Ryan. Ryan Gay. Is that what I was gonna say? Hey, Ryan was like, he need the gay community to step up and be there for him. Where is this video at? I think it's on Facebook. I gotta show you the video, y'all. I was so like, I was so nervous, let me tell you. Because I don't want the retaliation in my house. You know what I'm saying? Okay, hopefully I get a better video for y'all. I'm determined. Let's see. Uh, Harvey's not gonna put theirs out until later. Okay, sorry. All right, so we want, oh, Ryan. I know Ryan was recording. No, that's weird, isn't it? Sorry, y'all. Let me take it because I don't want to make you dizzy. I gotta find, so nobody, there's no video. Ain't that crazy? Oh, no. Yeah, and I didn't want, I couldn't record because you had to sit in the back and it was hot as all outdoors in that joker, baby. I was like, not today. I can't sweat. That don't look good to me today. Oh, you was watching it? His video did freeze when I was watching it. Oh, okay. Well. Let's see, I don't think I N A was live, but I think I. Uh, not this girl. Oh, she is taking over.
And not being. I'll call you your name, Shelby Shell, give you your kudos.
Yeah, they don't even see the video. Ain't that something? I'm sure it's gonna pop up. I wish I could have recorded. But it was more important for me to say something today. And to speak up, which I never. When I go to the meetings, I don't say anything. The news cameras were out there, baby. So maybe they're not gonna stay. And he know they're not gonna stay. Because it's not salacious. You know what I'm saying? It's slacious enough. And you know what was crazy? They mentioned today that there was an un-alignment on the next block. Now, they didn't say, like, call the residents, send a Ebola alert, I don't know, send a pigeon to let the people know. I said, what the world? And the person was un-alabed in an abandoned house. That's crazy. I know, where Ryan at? Let's see if Ryan gonna come on. Let me, I probably hit Ryan up. Because he was just live. But see, what happened was, this is how they got slick. They only let, when they put us out the meeting, they only let five people in the meeting at a time. Five. So if you weren't in the room, you could not. If you, if you're not one of them five to get back up in there, to get in there to. Get back in that room to speak. You, you lost your turn to speak at public comments. And listen, them people going O C on, on the mayor. I said, Lord have mercy. And the people from Chicago showed up, baby. Let me tell you, it was like, oh, okay. They was saying, telling Harvey residents, don't stop being a coward and stick up for yourself. I was like, okay, that's no way to get people to. Them people are afraid. Dang it, we ain't gonna be able to see the video, y'all. That's unfortunate. And I wanted to show y'all this video. Um, and the Harvey Herald is not gonna release that video until tomorrow. So, well, let me just take, I'mma text Ryan. Hold on. And say if he, I don't think Ryan was in the room also. Everybody got put out there, that building. See. I saw Ms. Mary there today. I saw the Cook County, what was, what was she? McCaskill. She was there. She has some people, you can't, you know, there's certain people you can't mess with. Hey there. I happen to record. Okay. All right, bam. So I just reached out to Ryan because I can't find the video anywhere. And I was looking at, what's his name? He was still outside and a lot of the media were still outside when. When it was going, when it was going on. Sorry, I forget I have one light on. You know, dark folks need darkness, need light. Yes, but yes. So the meeting was definitely a. Uh, it was a success. Because them deltas came out. And anytime I, and there's one lady saying, more of us is coming. I said, oh, okay. Shee, more of them coming? So, the sore rolls came out, just in case. Uh, and there was a video I wanted to, we emailing myself. Stuff to talk about. And then when I want to talk about, I can't find it. But yes. Oh, you know what I did? I sent it to somebody. Yes, so. Yeah, I hit Ryan up, so I'm waiting to see if he has a, have the video that we can go over. If not, we have to review it tomorrow because I could not record again. And I just hope they don't retaliate by taking in my car. You know what I'm saying? Harvey plays dirty over here. And it's so frustrating. Oh, but I got my, um, but I got my speech. I want me to, want you, want me to read my speech to y'all? Oh, it's in my purse. God dog it. Yes. And it was so many. Jesus. Sorry, y'all. Yeah. Mm-hmm. I was freezing up. Doggone, I can't, you know how you be doing stuff? So tell me, hey, since I got you out here, because we can't talk about Harvey because I don't have. I don't have the, the video. I want. Private group, I see. Now I'm on Facebook. Okay, let's join. I don't live in, anyway, have you ever? Yes, sorry. I would be more organized next time. I need to find this video because I need for y'all to see this video of this young lady in Missouri. She gave an awesome and awesome speech in her board. And so there was. Oh, well. Oh, I think I found it, y'all. I think I found it. I need to have it on a page where I can quickly access it, my stuff. I'm learning, y'all. I'm learning, I'm learning, I'm learning. Yeah, I don't see the video. Ah, dog it. Well, with that being said. I don't know when I'm going to do, this Friday, I'm gonna do a drive. I wish I knew the address of where the Polk lived. I would definitely have went past the drive by. I'm just saying. I definitely would have. But I don't know the address. And I don't know where to go. Okay, so in the meet, let me say this. So the meeting and Carol said she saw it, but it was grainy. Well, first of all, there was a, can I ride? You ain't coming Coffee. Well, let me know if you are. We, yeah, definitely. Ain't nothing down the street from around your people house. Okay, so in the meeting at Harvey today, first there was, before there was a meeting, there was a. Press conference. And boy, them people can talk. I was about to go sit down. And then they talked about the eighty-two-year-old woman. They, the city of Harvey took the eighty, hey Ramona, there she is, there she is, there she, there go my friend. There go my friend. Hey, D-Love, I know you was the one standing next to me. I forget you. How you doing? Hey, Ramona, do you want to come up right now and talk about tonight? You don't have to turn your camera on. You could just talk. Because I could not find any footage where it was clear. Because once Mayor Clark cleared the room, everybody else, everybody else had to leave the room. So if you were recording, you didn't get back in. You came in midst of the, the meeting. So. Let me see, let me. Hey, Ms. Ramon, hit that link and let's talk about it. Come on. Because I want you to, because you know I did public comments this evening and I was nervous at Sugar Honey Ice Tea. But I had to get my, get my thought, my thoughts out. I needed more than three minutes because three minutes goes so fast. It, oh, I'm great, okay. One thing that, there was a lot of people who were activists in Chicago. Sounds like, but and don't get too over excited. I'm here. I'm glad you are here, status quo. Yeah, a lot of people, there was a lot of active activists came from Chicago who were in that meeting tonight. And. From Chicago. So it got really, it got a little aggressive out there today. But I don't know what much is gonna change. But I hope more people continue to come out. And he proceed, you know what he said at the end? I hope they, that Harvey put the need, the video out tomorrow and don't edit it. And that's what made people get up and leave. The Clark says, sometimes you got to show people. He was talking about Kobe, Kobe Chat, older woman Kobe Chapman. That you, you had, he, he was trying to teach her a lesson. And then all the woman Kobe Chapman says she found out the day that they are giving her more charges. I say, you can't make this stuff up. You can't make this stuff up. And where's the one? Another Department Agent Managers, okay. It's like, it's like living in a movie. You think Tiffany was bad? Tiffany was lightweight, if you ask me. She was lightweight. That's why it was easier to put in the. My last goodbye to my daughter because of addiction. Yeah, she was definitely lightweight. And. I hope. That they do more. Because the people are fed up in Harvey and they don't want to keep talking about it. And they want change to happen. They want change to happen. Do you think we gonna get it? Hope you will keep covering the issues on the region and not apologize just me. A great issue of interest beyond the region, gal. Thank you, sir. As a status quo. I would do my due diligence and do, and do that for sure. For sure. You know, it just baffled me how. It just, like, I don't know, like, why we gotta, like, the people in Harvey, a lot of people don't show up. A lot, and they don't show up because don't nobody want to get arrested? Don't nobody want to find or be harassed by the police? Pope holes. So, yeah, he did not, I just can't believe Ryan did not post the video. So. Let's see. I'm trying to, I'm sorry, I'm trying to find it because I want y'all to really understand what went on tonight. Let's see what goes on the news tonight. Oh, oh, it's on, it's on Twitter, huh? Flip Chicago Red. Oh, that's what they call Flip Chicago Red. And they are, they, they out here for real, for real. Okay, hold on. I see it's on X. Let me show it to y'all. This is just a piece of X. Listen, they were, the police, they were laughing. It was like, wow, okay. What y'all laughing for? I'm confused. I'm so confused. I don't think they're taking it serious. Harvey Mayor. Okay, hold on, okay, let me show you this. Oh, Danielle denied the right to speak at the Harvey City Council meeting even after properly signing up. Instead of allowing public voices. Oh, can y'all see this? Oh, I saw those Flip Chicago Red people and they don't play, oh, they do not play. I didn't even, I was like, oh. Who these people? I'm just saying. I don't know, can you see that? Oh, that group needs to sit down. I heard about that group, Flip Chicago Red. Oh, really? Okay, Danielle was denied the right to speak at Harvey City Council meeting even af, they must have kept them outside. They kept them outside during the meeting. You see that? Everybody else was in, especially her, the big mouth. For real? Uh, this was clear abuse of power and a violation of due process. Or they said, this, the people would not be silent. Let's see what.
Y'all disruptive, but guess what? The people is back in the building. That's all that matters.
That's all that matters.
So look.
That's all that matters.
So look, he said we disrupted, but look, we had the shirts on, so he's not letting two people with shirts on. And he told the one who didn't have a shirt on, she can come in. He told the one. She was just as loud, she was just as loud as us. She was just, she can talk to the media just like us. She just did all that, but look, he said she can come in. But the people with the two shirts, y'all better not come in because guess what? It don't matter though, the city of Harvey wants these shirts and we getting ready to mail it. As a matter of fact, we gonna, uh, we gonna. No, we gonna make sure, we gonna make. No, we gonna make sure, we gonna make sure.
How they got the people upset with the police, he like, what, who, I live here, but you can't say shit to your manager.
You see how they not, so we gonna do is.
We did what we had to do.
Drop off some shirts, we gonna drop off. We gonna drop off, we gonna drop off some Chicago Flip's red shirt, cause they want them here, and then they gonna wear them, we not playing. They're talking about flipping Harvey red. I keep telling y'all, they're talking about flipping Harvey red. We not playing, before you know it, this whole, listen Illinois, this whole. Cook County.
You got a lawsuit though.
I know, Cook County and Chicago is going to flip weird. We not playing, we gonna shed a light on all these Democrat, they policies, you see what they did? They hate Republicans here. They hate Republicans here.
They hate themselves here.
Yeah, yeah, they hate.
I didn't know what they, I really didn't know what they were. Their uh, thing was, I was just saying Flip Chicago Red. It's a Chicago flips red, I'm like, okay. Uh, they said they gonna have a, a federal lawsuit against Dalton. Um, they said they gonna take the rest of, I mean Dalton, the rest of Harvey's money. I said Lil Harvey ain't got no money now.
This, this is, this is a corrupt ass city, it's a corrupt ass county, it's a corrupt ass state. And you gotta change this shit.
They let the citizens in, that's all it was about.
We did what we had to do, well, you didn't get to talk.
Oh, that's good, I'm glad, you did, that was, and you did great. You did amazing.
Oh. Okay. I didn't know.
What, what'd they say, I was what?
Oh, hold on, let's see, can hear what he said originally. Yeah, you do. That seems illegal.
What, what'd they say, I was what?
So I told y'all.
Well, it's screaming.
I didn't give a dog.
Yeah, it was on turn.
You left, okay, right, the media, it's okay.
Oh, telling the truth? Oh, telling the truth?
It's a way to do things with this, with this community, the way y'all been doing it too, so, so listen, we were denied, we were denied getting in. We were denied getting in, so we were, we were denied asking.
Oh.
Guys.
Never a dull moment, huh? Okay, I've never heard of Flip Chicago Red until today, I must admit. You can ask Brandon Johnson about those people. Oh, Lil Harvey, I don't know, they can handle Flip Chicago Red, baby. Okay, let's see, okay, here's an. I don't know, okay.
This hand group making loud unusual noises, clapping, speaking out or interrupting on the city council meeting. One may not repeat the performance of one's official leaders. If any person acts disorderly matter of public meeting and then persists after being warned by the mayor of West Carolina.
So you can get put out, I found, I found a good video. I'm not sure how much of this is, but. Who this video, let me show you who this video by. Uh, I'm back, Dila, okay, back, so, Solo, I'm glad you back. Oh, Chicago, oh, Chicago Flip Red, so they didn't get the whole um, video. Oh, well, well, we can see some of it. Flip Chicago Red, baby.
In order for persons to withdraw when they move from the meeting. If the person refuses, they can be removed and fined under disorder conduct of City IOCS one dash forty dash five.
IOCS, let me look this up, cause I was wondering, uh. IOCS. I wanna look this ordinance up, cause I had never heard of it. Sorry. Cause I'm like, how they have an ordinance that the Constitution? Hey, Ms. Malone, how you doing? Glad to see you, baby girl. Now, look at this. Mm-mm. Come on. Let's stop it, start. What the heck? Um. What's going on? Wanted to show you that. Uh, now this is the crazy part, let's, let me show you this real quick. I wish I could've seen the whole lab. So this is what this fight is about. See, um, Harvey City Council took the home. Uh, you hear me, the Harvey City Council took the home from a eighty-seven-year-old woman. And turned it over to a developer base in Ohio. That's what all this fight is about, that's why she called older woman Kobe Chapman, got kicked out the meeting. And uh, manhandled at the me, at the meeting. They said the, the sale was for two thousand, they sold this woman house for two thousand dollars. The home is worth a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. Ain't that crazy? Where they do that at? They sell your house and they said they have the actual deed to the home. Explain. Explain. Oh, let's see this. Politics and politicians have gotten so corrupt, yes. I totally agree. I tell you, I totally agree. Let's see what Harvey World get. Now, Harvey World is like, um. Okay, Coffee, we not doing that, no, 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 no. You should, Coffee, you can delete that one, cause we not gonna get involved in that, cause that's messy. Bay in the chat, I'm not, I'm not talking about that, cause I don't have nothing to do with that. I don't wanna be caught in that drama, but that's what's gonna happen. Nope, that's not it. Yes, just let, uh, your last statement is largely correct, eh, Coffee, but suggests you become more informed on President Trump policy. That is backed by court, I M H O. Thank you, Coffee, cause. That is gonna get worse. And I ain't even got nothing to do with that part. That part. You know, you know. Uh. I can't. I hate that I cannot find the video. It's, they said the revolution would not be televised, well, I guess it ain't gonna be televised today, y'all. Yeah, I'm sorry, we don't do that, yeah, we don't do that. No, only, well, mm-mm. It's a whole mess over there. Shit, and we trying to fight for Harvey and what they got going on and. I don't wanna do that. Not today. And not tomorrow. I know you mean well. That's something you don't wanna be involved in. Trust me. Mm-mm. You don't be in for it. Gosh. Is this Chicago? Look at this. Oh, I left my stuff up, sorry, y'all. Okay, it says a former South Suburban uh, cemetery employee is accused of secretly pocketing more than a hundred thousand dollars. From payments for funeral expenses, oh, I saw that. I'm like, you can't, what is going on in this world? What is going on? Uh-uh, I didn't mean to do that, I couldn't, trying to get rid of it. Cause the next thing I know, I'll be posting in somebody's uh, chat, to my YouTube. Uh. I cannot get any. Hmm, I saw, the whole news were there, so I'm not sure why I can't get any videos. News. Uh. Uh, what, what can I put in there? Statistic, I'm, I'm, I'm reading it all on what he is doing and dismantling. Yeah, he is really taking, like, between all what's going on in our public, in our um, everyday life. We get more, we have more problems and problems and problems and problems and problems. We having a, we gonna, there's a water increase. Uh, in Harvey, June first. I said, shoot. It's hard, it's hard out here, I'm gonna tell you that now. Mm-hmm, all I can say is Satan is busy, can you say that one more time? I'm not available to come in, Dila, okay, all right, it's all right, Ramona. But I appreciate you. Appreciate you a whole lot. Uh, he's trying to stay busy, he definitely staying busy, let me tell you, cause. I always say. Stay out the YouTube streets. And watch from a distance. Cause you may become a part of that show. Just saying. Uh. Yes. But um, it was funny, he, the room was so packed, it was so packed and it was so hot. And he was, it was like, and then the police, when they had put us out, they were laughing. I'm so, that was weird. And uh. That was, that was weird, they was laughing at us, cause we were standing outside. I'm like, I can't believe this. Hey. Um. So, I was trying to find, I, I even saw, um. I even saw Mary there, not Mary, what's her name? Beth, Beth was even there. So. We got in, oh, we got in the meeting, I got in the meeting, oh, you did get in the meeting, okay. I think I saw you. I was able to speak to them tonight, Ramona, but I was nervous as ever. But I was glad to be able to get it off, you know what I'm saying, and say what I had to say. And I, I know that he wouldn't acknowledge it. What I, what I was, you know. But. I wish that, what was that? I wish that more could be done in the community. I don't even hear. I will keep you updated when we left, oh, I will keep you updated when we left, more police came. Oh, you know what, that's why I left, when I left, there was a police behind my vehicle. And the one thing I didn't want. Was the police coming to, to tow my car. To do anything unlawful, unlawful, cause you know it's coming. You know it's coming. And so. Yeah, I left, I left, when they start by taking pictures, I looked over there, I saw the police by my vehicle, I said, it's probably a good time to leave. And then when I left, I don't know if I was paranoid or not, then I see police coming down the street, I said, Lord. Give me mercy, give me grace, you already gotta be afraid to go, to be outside. Now you gotta be afraid to go to, trying to get to your house. So. Oh, she said more police came, like, something wrong with these people, like, where is all these police? What was the purpose? What was the purpose? I'm like. The Chicago Red know that Trump signed an executive order basically granting police immunity against their kind. I don't know what they knew, all I know, they were loud. And I was trying to figure what the heck is going on here? I mean, it was good to have people to fight for, be in part of the community, but the problem is. They need more other people in the community to come out, you know what I'm saying? It's good to have other people to come and help fight for you, but you gotta come out and fight also. Yeah, see, he, Martin G, he got in late, cause he was outside. So he didn't get a chance to see uh, everything. He, uh, oh, wow. Let's see. Let's see, Harvey one defends herself. Okay, let's see, you can look at this. So I don't know, have you all seen this video? Oh, let me show you. Okay. I don't know if you've seen this video. What the world, what the world? I'm like, shoot. I'm gonna go to the next meeting and I'm gonna try my best to always have the courage to speak when need to be spoken, you know what I'm saying? But I don't like being. Okay, so this is the, this will happen, I don't.
Another woman in suburban Harvey is telling her side of the story today.
She has been arrested multiple times during city council meetings and Nate Rogers is live with more on that, Nate.
Absolutely Sylvia and Terrence, Kobe Chapman has been older woman here in Harvey for at least two years now. Her critics call her outspoken, all will tell you that she's unafraid to challenge the member as well as other city council members about precedent issues regarding her ward. Now first, I do wanna take you to some video that's gone viral now on social media, the second ward alderman being physically removed by Harvey police. From a city council meeting, this is Chapman's third time being arrested by Harvey police during a meeting, this last incident happening April twenty-eighth. She says officers bruised her arms in the process. Now Chapman was trying to address the mayor about a resident's property being sold, she tells me, but Mayor Chris Clark would not acknowledge her. The older woman kept speaking before a motion was made to have her dismissed from the meeting, here's more.
And the crazy part about it is, the four, I think there are four aldermen, they voted to have her ejected from the meeting.
Actually be, probably devil's advocate, why not just be silent, why resist, uh, why not just leave?
You know what, uh, in that moment, I gathered my things and, and that's exactly what I was looking to do, but when three male officers approached me as a female. As I'm trying to gather my things, I think that would startle any person, whether it be man or woman. Because there's this abrasive approach to uh, asking me to leave, and I simply was leaving. But the further point is, is all of that insane.
She, she was locked up, she was uh, thrown out the meeting three times. Now she was locked up once. For, for something.
Waited simply because I was being a voice for Ms. Allen.
And quite interesting, Chapman's mother was at that same meeting, she was arrested as well, both of them now charged with disorderly conduct. And resisting arrest, now of course, we reached out to Mayor Clark's team for comment on this issue, we have yet to hear back. We do know at six o'clock tonight, Chapman's um, supporters will be out here demonstrating right outside of City Hall. Right before a city council meeting is to take place, of course, we'll continue to follow this story, keep you updated on air and online in Harvey, Nate Rogers, Fox thirty-two Chicago.
Well, I'm glad they said they would continue to um. Stay on top of it, let's see how long that they will stay on top, because you know, um, Channel Two didn't do a very good uh, story on her.
Round to the last living American hostage in Gaza now.
It was kinda like, really nasty, what, or uh, Channel Two said about um. Older woman, I'm so tired of trifling politician, maiden, maiden model stand, excuse me. You are absolutely right. Trifling, and they sit there with their chest out and they act as though they are above the rest. When you go to the meeting, you feel like. That's the slave master up there, those his handlers, and we are the peasants, or the slaves. That's what it feels like, and it shouldn't feel that way. The ring of the President Trump being associated to Flip Chicago Red group would be a, oh, horrendous mistake. Uh, Chicago Red has no orientation. Uh, Chicago Red has no ori- orientation to Trump other than by some of their individual members. Well, they definitely are destructive. And made in Texas, yes. What is the, that monk of a mayor hiding? What are they hiding? That's the, that's the, that's the interesting question. Like, why are they fighting so hard to keep Kobe Chapman from saying anything? And see, my guess is, and this is just my guess, they know that she gonna, she, if she runs for a mayor, she possibly could do something. You know what I'm saying? Change. But... I don't know. They, they gonna fight this to the end, cuz they definitely don't want us to see something. And, uh... It'll be nice, what did? They said that the, the treasurer, that we would not see a treasurer report because the treasurer has not did one. But the treasurer says she cannot do one because she doesn't have, they won't give her the information to do a treasurer report. Mm-hmm. That's what they said. And that's dirty. That's what they said. So, that lets you know. They got a lot of work to do. Cuz I know, I ain't trying to go, I ain't trying to go to jail, I can tell you that today. I ain't, ooh. Not today and tomorrow ain't looking too good. Yeah, I don't know. Okay. Uh... And the, and the thing is, let me show you, say this. And I ain't trying to be funny, I'm not trying. But the one thing for certain, two things for sure, I wanna show you this. Hmm, let me show you this, let me show you this. Uh, the man who grabbed her. Where's the man who grabbed her? Okay. Let me say this. Any, anyone have a Jennifer tomorrow throwing me? I don't know nothing about, uh, I don't know, you can go on a Thorn website, you should see it. Um... This man is a Hispanic man, no, and no offense to anybody who's Spanish speaking, but he's a Spanish man. And he grabbed this woman like that. He, I've never seen him grab one of his people like that. And I've been, I wanna say it, I've been wanting to say it. But it's just funny that he sits there and then he stood at the top of the stairs and was laughing while we stood outside and, outside. And they, and, and, um, status quo, and they locked the doors. They, they put us out the building. Now they were saying is, they were only supposed to put, uh, we had to be in the hallway, we had to be, and we couldn't stay in the, um, in the, uh, meeting room. But they sent us all the way out. A whole walkout that night was a weasel move. Yes. They put us all, so we had to go all the way outside and then they locked the doors on us. Yes, they did. Yes, they did. Lucky it wasn't cold outside, but a lot of people left. And normally I would leave when they, every, when they put us out, I'd just leave cuz I ain't feel like going through all this. But I didn't leave today cuz I had to, I had something to say. And I was gonna get out what I had to say today. It wasn't much, but... Oh. Oh, did y'all see this? Hold on. Side note, side note, side note. Real side note, side note, side note. Hmm... You see, this is, uh, this is the Pope's house. Hopefully I don't get a, um, one of them people living in. The Pope House in Dalton is 212 East 141st Street Place. And it's for sale. Who going bad in Dalton? What the comments say? Why sell it? He could keep it as a summer home. Don't, ain't nobody want no home, summer home in Dalton? The art diocese should buy it. Nah, diocese. He don't grow, didn't grow up in Dalton. He grew up in Riverdale. They say he grew up in Riverdale, so I'm not sure what's the, he didn't grow up in Dalton, he grew up in Riverdale. So I'm not sure where he grew up at. That's just what the people say. That's what the people say. Have y'all heard that? That's what they say. Oh, wow. Hey, listen. Side note, side note, I gotta, listen, I don't normally be on Facebook, I'm gonna tell you that now. I don't. Oh, but I got a, uh, a feel-good story for y'all. I don't even, they said, uh, can y'all see this cuz I can't see. Uh, yours meal. It says, hey, listen, I love the Sanders, but I'm a little irritated with Deion Sanders, but that's a hit or there. Hot news, Sanders, Shador Sanders unexpectedly paid the hospital bill for 50 cancer patient, patients in Colorado as part of a series of charitable activities by the young star, earning him the admiration of many NFL fans. Wow. Wasn't that nice? Let's see. Oh, yes. Did you post it? Hold on. Uh, let's see. Let's see, chat. Uh, no, I, Kobe, Kobe. I know. Alder. Dang, I know I got her number. Let's see, I'ma see if I can, um... Hold on. Alder. Oh, I do got her number. Oh, oh, okay. Let's see. Uh... I don't wanna call her. I wanna send her a text. Oh, one more. I'ma see if I can get older woman Kobe Chapman to come on live tonight. No. Oh, create, okay. Hold on, I'ma see if I can get the old, get the older woman to come on live. If not... Hold on. Okay, and I sent it. Oh, he said he hasn't posted yet, okay. Uh, let me see. So, okay, so hopefully I have the older woman, uh, Kobe Chapman come on tonight. So just at least talk about tonight and talk about today. And, um, Ryan, he's gonna come on. Hmm... Let me send Ryan, oh, your smile. Uh, one second, let me send Ryan an e-bike. You know what? You know what's? Let me email her. Uh... I work and I, it's only me, y'all, so I can't... It's only me. Yeah, I wish I'd stopped and got some, um, chicken tenders tonight. Oh, boy. Okay. Alright, I sent it to Ryan. Oh no, she... Okay. Hey Granny G, how you doing? How you doing? Um... I got Ryan. Whisper if you wish to be heard. Whisper if you wish to be heard. Yes. So I'm hoping, I hope all is well Granny G, and I hope you had a fabulous, a fabulous Mother's Day. But every day is Mother's Day, but I'm gonna say for today. Uh... She may not, I'm just saying. Yeah, cuz she was manhandled. It was the craziest thing ever. And I'm still shocked about how like no, not one man stood up and said, hey. I think I heard somebody say, hey, after the fact, but I didn't really hear too much of it. And, um... We gotta do better. Like, Harvey has a, a Spanish-speaking community and I don't know where they at. It passes said that to me once. Whisper if you wish to be heard. Okay. I'ma definitely remember that. Definitely, 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 definitely. Um... And hopefully, I do have Ryan coming on tonight, and he hasn't posted the video, so hopefully his, when he does his video, we probably can't review it till tomorrow. But it's okay. It's okay. We gonna get, uh... Uh, let's see, I'm trying. Like, this is not like Harvey. My sister feels and daughter Lisa. They always talk about men putting their hands on women, but look how they handled that lady. Yeah, did you see how the bruises on her arm? That was crazy. I didn't know they could do that. I mean, like a public official, somebody who was voted into that? And they could just bruise her up like that? Yeah. Yes, I'm wrong. I know, I'm turning over somewhere. Ruthie Jean Woods. That's just crazy. I... Let's see. Let's see, let's see how much we can get out of here. Uh, disclaimer, okay, this is for public use only. How you get? How you getting rid of that? Oh no, hold on. Uh... Okay, I don't know how I get that. Okay, let's try this again. Okay, sorry. Okay. Man, I'm so dark, I'm duck. I don't know, did anybody see this video? Uh...
Gracious God.
We can pass on it.
The needs of those that are in need. Across our city, residents are facing fee increases on water bills, municipal gas tax, property taxes, housing inspections, and business licenses to name and use. Implement, implemented party with little to no committee discussion or public explanation. I push for legislation to bring these increases before council committees where they can be debated and justified. These efforts have been, have gone ignored. We, the people of the city of Harvey, this administration, this nine-body council, should be coming together on these issues. Not to burden our residents,
Strange, our water bill is going up here, also, really?
We should be focused on attracting a grocery store, pharmacy, stable businesses to our community.
Why are you doing that? I hate that.
Also wanna speak honestly and directly.
How you get rid of that? Oh, hey.
For speaking with acts to come to earth. My passion for the issues facing our residents sometimes pushes me beyond procedural boundaries. But my intent has always been to speak for those who feel voided. For the residents who elected me to stand in this chamber and represent them with courage and conviction. We are all elected to serve the people, and that means we should all be held to the same standard of transparency and responsibility. Public service that may have public answers, not silence, not avoidance, not suppression. To the second, to the sixth, of the residents of the city of Harvey. I will continue to fight for you. I will continue to speak up for you, even when it's uncomfortable. And I will continue to push for a city government that works for the people, not against them. And at this time, I wanna bring forward Ms. Allen. As you all know, her home, she actually turns 89 tomorrow. Can we all say happy birthday, Ms. Allen? Uh, an amazing sector resident. She's been in this community 27 years. And to think that my very questioning of why the home was being sold and how it was being sold and who it was being sold to within a cause not only me, huh? But as we celebrate the day after Mother's Day and have you related Mother's Day for all my mothers. Could you imagine your mother in handcuffs because she stood up for her child? Well, that's what I was faced with on Monday, April 28th. But that's why, that's in the rearview. We're focusing on the windshield, the bigger picture. Seventeen months, we got a lot of work to do. So let's get to work.
I can't stop it like I want to. What a B-ball team did she play for? She didn't play basketball, she did play basketball in high school, she told me.
And the family. There has been a taking of one of my mother's properties. She has a double lot here in Harvey. This face issues of being basically strong-armed from course into signing documents, uh, disconnecting the property so one of the properties could be sold. Which in fact, I understood on April 28th, um, they in fact sold one of the properties for $2,000 to an investor.
That's crazy, they sold $2,000?
We would have generally just given them a donation to, for our way. We are asking for due process. That's all I'm asking, is due process. So that we can all come together, your proof, my proof, and let's just say who actually owns the property. My mother holds the deed. We have the original deed. That deed has never been transferred. It has never been sold. I have power of attorney. So therefore, I would have done this documents. I have not. And I am saying what the city of Harvey did, I, I, I find it unconscionable. I find that...
They sold part of this woman, 89-year-old woman home for $2,000.
I am asking that this be stopped, that light be shown on it. I'm asking for due process from a time to have that done. And I appreciate Ms. Kobe actually standing up. She went to jail defending my family, and we elected her. The people of the second who elected her to speak for us, Ms. Betty cannot come and speak for herself. That's why we voted for Ms. Kobe. Why won't they let her speak? They wouldn't even let me speak, though. And I'm just asking that this be noticed.
They're trying to take advantage of an elderly lady.
Not being able to get up in the morning, to wash your face, brush your teeth.
They turn the water off.
Have a cup of tea. Well, this actually happened to my mom. She was 88 then. They cut her water off starting February the 14th for weeks. So until they had her to agree to having the water disconnected. And at that time, it was off again for an additional, I wanna say 30 to 60 days. Eventually that caused harm to her health. Um, we had to agree... at that point to get her water turned back on. They told to us that if we didn't do that, that the water would be cut off in both homes.
Do you think these people, uh reporters really care?
They would condemn the houses to live, and therefore, they take the property anyway. I feel that that is totally against all that is right. And we would like to have our opportunity, our day important, to discuss this matter.
No, I know they don't. It's not salacious as Dalton.
I would, I would like to state for the records that we have, we have a pastor Johnson. We have filed a class, a federal lawsuit against, uh, the city of Harvey for the erroneous, uh, water bills that have been issued to residents and business owners. So if residents or business owners would like to join the class action lawsuit, feel free to reach out to me as well. Uh, there has been an inflation of water bills. Before the water, uh, department was out of receivership of Chicago, our, uh, water bills were very low. And now that it's in the hands of the city of Harvey, that water bill is now six hundred, seven hundred dollars. And it's all because we're not playing.
Six or seven hundred dollars a month for water?
Let it be known that it's free of cost to anyone in the city of Harvey that has received this egregious, uh, these egregious acts of retaliation and foolishness that's going on with this administration. And now it's time to take the fight to the street. I thank God for all of the publications down here that are present, because it's time to take the fight to the street, because we don't have a voice inside of the city all day.
Wow.
I'd now like to raise to your attention that, uh, if you didn't know, across one hundred and fifty-third and Myrtle, sixteen families, nine that were occupied, seven that were, no longer will have the opportunity to live in their home. And behind me are, are a hero and a she-her that are still standing.
He ninety years old, this man right here.
Uh, but this is now the seventeen home, right? Ms. Allen's home is also one murder. And so I be, uh, I'm flabbergasted that across Myrtle, you have the seventeen residents that have, that have a housing issue. But this time, I'd like to bring this pool tangle and, uh, Mr. Tangle, who has been a resident here fifty plus years, eighty plus years ago.
Oh, he's eighty? I thought he was ninety. Uh, I can't, okay.
We have, uh, my father, he lives on one hundred fifty-third and Myrtle. No, forcibly. Not that we want to, because like, my dad will be ninety in August. And we just lost our mother three years ago, so therefore, this was supposed to be our forever home. He worked hard. He migrated from his job.
What are they waiting to develop on these projects?
And the notion of, you know, it being said.
Made in Texas. They're trying to build some kinda a retention pond in the middle of a residential area. And it's not like when you go to the subdivision, y'all have these ponds on the back of, in the back of your house. Like this, right? And I'm gonna take you on another tour, when it's safe to take you on a tour, to show you, uh, where the retention pond, where they're trying to build this at in the middle. Like, where they trying to put the retention pond? There's so many other places that they can put the retention pond, where it, where there are a lot of vacant lots. But they choose to put it, like, take all their homes and put it there. But you know, my whole thing is, my thought process is, the hospital's down the street. Are they trying to do this for the hospital? Recorded live, oh, okay, I thought somebody was, yeah, I'm just saying.
Well, they could just start over. Look at the housing market that we're in. It's not that easy. Even the money that was given to us, it's not a lot that we can go out and purchase the same type of home that we have. The home that my father lives in actually has two. The one that I live in and the one that he lives in is a six bedroom home, over two thousand and five hundred square feet. We will never be able to afford that. They were, they did not give us enough to afford that. But the point of the matter is, my father and mother worked hard to own what they had, and they just to be gone. You would have never seen this coming. Thank you.
And they promised them that they would make them whole when they were doing the deal.
Man, he need his own, uh. He needed his own, uh. Press conference.
They said they were gonna make them whole, and they lied. That is a criminal act. That is a lie, and it's a criminal act.
Man, that is bad over there.
This is not necessary. One block over, one hundred fifty-second and Lexington, there only two occupied homes on that block, and one business. They could have put it right there. What the hell is going on?
Hi, my name is Chappelle Hooks. I am a fifty-one year resident in Harvey. I am also elected to the Harvey Public Library Board. Um. The problem here is that we have a person that feels that they have power. When we are the power. We, we the people are the power. We have been bamboozled and hoodwinked. We were told that the prior administration was, was killing us and taking everything from us, but in fact, it's this administration. Our streets are raggedy, they're dark. We have five thousand four hundred and twenty-seven abandoned homes in Harvey. Why would you take people out of their homes to put a pond? When you have so many streets with no residents living? You have abandoned lots. There's an abandoned lot across the street from my house that's been abandoned for thirty years. He, they could have used. Dixie Square, they could have used. These people are losing their generational wealth. He and his wife purchased their homes for their children to pass.
Can you imagine after you pay your home off, you work two and three jobs, long hours, and you're like, well, this is where I'm gonna, I retire and live in my, until I die, and they said, no, it's, we gotta take your home. And now, you're a senior now, right? It ain't like when you in your thirties, forties, fifties, maybe sixties. But at some point, where you gonna be is where you gonna be, right? And so now people are forced, who are seniors, to have to find another way. Now, there was people on that block who took the money and moved. But, and moved. But what do you do if you can't afford to move anyplace else? You basically make, forcing people into poverty. You basically forcing people into places that they are, are unknown to them. It's like, uh, when they, it's like when they tore down the, the projects in Chicago. The projects was what the people knew. And that's what they knew, but, and then they, they tore the projects down in Chicago, and these people were scattered all around. And then, then the crime started to shift all over. Because you now have taken these people out what they know. Like, when does this stop? You know what I'm saying? When does this all stop? A retention area is not a pond until it holds flooded water. However, the location should be held in a study of impact. Agreed. When you refuse to move, they lowball people before taking their homes. Your intimate domain. And I'm wasn't, I'm not against the, the water retention pond, but I would want it in a place where people are not, um, displaced, you know what I'm saying? Cuz I hate, I would hate if I'm one of those families who had to sell my home for less than what the value is. Now, you already got abandoned houses next to you, so you're already not getting the value that was paid for the home. I'm just saying, I divert.
Down to their kids. Like a lot of our parents do. They came here in the seventies, the, the sixties, seventies. Some families was here from the beginning, eighteen, nineteen, one. And they, and they tried to build, to leave something for their families and for future generations. They can't do that now, not here in Harvey. That's not fair. And then you sit back, you humiliate an elected official. You let, you allow them to abuse her in the public eye. Sit up there and you say how your mom was abused. But you allowed them to abuse her? What type of person are we dealing with? Ask him his real name. How many of those he got? Who is he today? Is he Clarence or is he Chris? Let's, let's, let's. So, in closing.
Yeah, it is important that it continue. I come like, I'mma come. But I ain't got time to go to the gym. They threw my mace away, y'all. My mace went in the garbage. I'm so heartbroken about my mace. Let's see, I got a good picture. Oh, he's a transformation. Oh, that's Transformation United Methodist Church. Oh, okay. See, these are the little clearer version. Zoe? Let's see. Oh, see, that's a better, uh, picture.
When we are the power. We, we the people are the power.
Uh. Bamboozle and hoodwink. They ragged as hell.
Why would you take people out of their homes to put a pond? When you have so many streets with no residents living? You have abandoned lots. There's an abandoned lot across the street from my house that's been abandoned for thirty years. That he, they could have used. Dixie Square, they could have used. These people are losing their generational wealth. He and his wife purchased their homes for their children to pass down to their kids. Like a lot of our parents do. They came here in the seventies, the, the sixties, seventies. Some families was here from the beginning, eighteen, nineteen, one.
Oh, you, I don't know if you can hear in the background? Hold on. I don't know if you can hear in the background, but there's a mosque like a block and a half down, so you can hear the mo, the prayer they're having on the speakers. But they don't come to the meetings, and it starts at the time, so at, at six o'clock, but it started to just, to, at seven today, which was interesting. We gotta become smarter. The only people that should be standing at the podium is the people speaking. All the other people should have a social media phone, filming, filming, standing with the media, also asking questions to get the message out to all of your contact. Let's take advantage of it. Uh. I wish the very best of luck to these residents. It is, however, problematic, the voters allowed people like Clark to raise in power. And you know what status quo? They say, now, I did not vote for Clark, and I have to put that on record. But they said when he, when he got into office, he was like, he was humbled. Um. And he wanted to make a change. I don't know what happened, cuz he got reelected. This is his second go around. It's not his first. So I'm not sure why he changed the way he did, uh, does. Uh, that's on Constitution and Shakedown. Here from Tampa, Florida, okay. Now, is this even possible? It's possible. Human rights. Dictatorship. Uh, y'all thought Tiffany was the worst mayor. It's just, um, she was just an easy target. That's right, stand-up Harvey, uh. Let's see, shift, I mean, it's going all over, so I'm glad that people are like paying attention. She had, says she had police come to her house. Now, this is the one, this is, um, McCasco.
I stand here as a woman first, and then a resident. And on those premises, we at some point need to come together and work together. The city of Harvey does not have the luxury to have the news here to report on these types of issues. We need the news here to report on the money that we need to come into our community. We need the news here when it's time to talk about the disbursement of the funds that do come into our community. We need the news here when our seniors are telling me that their homes are being taken from them. In my role as commissioner, I have the responsibility of not only identifying where I live, but also helping with legislation, policy, and budgeting. So it is my job, and it is my responsibility, and I make a commitment to the city of Harvey and the residents, my fellow residents where I live, to ensure that we have some level of mediation to happen between our aldermate and our, our meroir. Something must happen. The city of Harvey does not have the luxury of this type of leadership. We need to have leadership in place. Either it be with the current mayor or someone else, but there needs to be leadership in place that makes people like the county, the state, and the federal government want and desire to send monies here. It's very difficult to bring monies and programs and grants and other opportunities into a city when it doesn't look like the, the council can get along. It's imperative that we begin to look at those things. We need to look at reforming the Harvey jail. We need monies for that as well. I too have been a, a, a visitor of the prison. However, neither, that's neither here nor there. My point is, we cannot continue to move forward in the order that we currently are. Everyone that's here in the news, we like to report all the negative stuff. When we do the positive, we need you here as well. The issues that are being brought for you, before you today, these are not new issues. These are issues that have been being made aware to you over the past three years. So together, we're going to need to find a way to mediate this situation, not only for, uh, Mayor Chapman, for
She's called mayor. One day she gonna be mayor of Harvey.
But for Mayor Clark as well to come together and have decent adult conversations, because we're responsible for governing our city. So with that being said, if I can assist in any way, I know Alder Woman Chapman has reached out several times. I've reached out to the mayor. Our schedules have not been able to connect, but I am using this platform tonight as a calling to him, as a call to action, for him to work with me and to work with the commissioners and the governor. What you doing? What are you doing? We have to get together in one room, and we have to have a conjoined and solid and consolidated vision for what this city needs to look like. Harvey does not have the luxury to continue in the work way that it's going right now. So with that, I'll be with Alder Chapman.
Yes, hey, Beth. And so this is the lady right here who we, who got, uh, arrested. Was she, she got, I don't know if she got arrested, what she finna talk about, but she had got a five hundred dollar fine. And she had to pay it. She went to court, and the court upheld that fine. And to be honest, that was the same day I got put out the office. Out the, out that meeting, but they didn't find me. I, I just, I just left. I said, okay. But I still was talking. But I still was talking as I was walking, but I got lucky. I didn't get fined, but she got fined five hundred dollars. Hey, Beth. It was nice seeing you today.
Apparel so that her voice would not be limited, be supposed to still get the message after what's going on here in our voice system of Harvey. Uh, so without you, I'm Ms. Watson. Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Flennis Watson, resident of the first ward. And on November.
Where's the first ward at?
Ward. At a city council meeting, I was escorted out of the room for apparently saying something from my team. What many of you probably.
I remember that day. She was sitting. She said something to herself, and that's when they arrested her. They had they had, um. They was waiting to, uh, hugs back at you. They was waiting to arrest her. I saw she didn't say anything to anyone that day.
Don't know is that at the beginning of every city council meeting, one of the police officers or the police chief will read a legal notice that states what our rights are within the, um, within the leading, um, chambers. And those those rights, um, do not include anything that is protected by the First Amendment. We can't clap. We can't speak. We can't, um, make any comments out of our seat. Um, because it's considered disruptive, um, disorderly conduct. And on November twenty fifth, I was cited for disorderly conduct and fined five hundred dollars. And it is a total shame. If you go back and watch the city, um, video of that that meeting.
Hey, Mike, how you doing?
You'll notice that whatever I said, I still to this day don't know what I said was inaudible. But apparently it was enough to have a police officer come across four aisle rows of seating to escort me out. And, um, and it's not just me. I was probably not. I certainly wasn't the first and I probably.
Oh, hold on, I gotta stop the chat. Thank you, Mike. Mike has just gifted one person a membership. If you have received a membership, say thank you. And listen, and if you haven't subscribed to the channel, we are working so hard to reach two two thousand subscribers. So if you haven't, please subscribe. Help me get to two thousand subscribers. And thank you, Mike. And if you receive a membership from Mike, please say thank you and drop a yellow heart so I'll know.
Unfortunately, it's very unfortunate that we can't even exercise our freedom of speech within a meeting. Literally tonight, unless they change it between now and and seven o'clock, literally tonight, you will hear the police chief or one of his designees read a legal notice and cite cite some laws and statutes and ordinances and blah, 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 some of which don't even, um, pertain or are no longer in effect. Um, but they use it as an intimidation tactic and that's the other thing. The, um, the mayor is using the police, um, the police officers as, um, to weaponize them against the citizens for them to to stay in their place, basically. So, um, just go back and watch any of these two videos for, um, city council meetings prior to today. And you'll see how eerily quiet it is in the chambers.
Uh, it wasn't quiet today because there was a lot of people there.
Can't say, yeah, that was good, or there's a comment that they make that we don't like. Ooh, we don't agree with that. None of that will be escorted out in a in a heartbeat.
In a heartbeat.
Um, so I had this shirt made because I I even made a public comment following that meeting that I'm going to wear this shirt anywhere I can because I hope it'll draw conversation from other people as to, well, what does that mean? You were denied your your right to speak or your right of speech.
She lives. She come from, uh, Everston.
That cannot continue where I'm staying resident.
She's from she came from she moved here from Everston. Bless her little heart. Bless her little heart. Uh. Let me, I wanna show you. I I figured out where I have the video at. Sorry. My fault, y'all. Okay. There's a video I want you all to see. I thought it was very impactful and really things that we things that we can really can think about and let me make you say, whoa. Take a second look at our own homes and where we come from and where we live. Uh, Mrs., uh, Representative Porti, Porti didn't slut, uh, stutter, nor have an, um, moment or a uh-huh, uh-huh, to give. She spoke with clarity, confidence, and conviction. I gotta show y'all this video. I've been wanting to let y'all see this video for a while.
How dare y'all? I've been in here for seven years and now now all of a sudden we care enough about people. How dare y'all?
Oh, wait a minute.
I've been in here for seven years and now all of a sudden we care enough about people who own Social Security and poor folks with circuit breakers and pink taxes and everything else, when we've had ample opportunity to pass this year after year after year after year, but only until it's attached to something that's gonna work for rich folks, do we care enough about this gross? And then have the audacity to say, oh, if you don't like this, you don't care. Y'all are too strong. We've cared year after year after year as uh after year. Welcome. Thanks for joining us on caring. No, I don't care about the folks who got to go and buy boats. And you can put that on Facebook. I don't have any of those in my district. No one's sitting at any marble tables over in the Seventy Third talking about capital gains tax. They are talking about these eggs. They are talking about how they have to use the emergency room for their primary care physician. They do talk about that. They do talk about rolling toilet paper around their drawers because they can't afford tampons and pads. They do talk about that. And if you're offended by that, that's what they talk about in my district and their Missourians too.
Uh, she's from she's from Missouri.
They talk about diapers and and all kinds of other stuff. So, yeah. We support those things too. Don't sit here and say we don't have common sense and don't care about these people. Don't even go there. Because I've heard a lot about people who are buying two and three houses. I'm not hearing enough about the Mormon who have to wrap a towel around their baby's backside to keep them clean and dry. Yeah, that's me sitting on the side gallery crocheting baby boots and socks. When you look at my M E C report, it's me clearing out my my campaign donations to go drive Mills on Wheels every Monday. That's what they're talking about in my neck of the woods. And, yeah, I stood here until the last three of us stood here because it was worth saying out loud. I'm not about to bug dance for the wealthy.
Hmm.
I don't bootlick. Those poor people who work those two and three jobs. I thank the lady for Jackson for talking about me. Because I'm not gonna be able to afford a house anytime soon as a millennial in this economy. She was talking about me. So, no, it's not just our constituents back in our district that's telling you they need something. I'm telling you I need it now. I don't get to fly into session. I don't plug my car in. I have Walmart greeters in my family in their sixties and seventies. Y'all get to run for office. I have to borrow money to pay my taxes to sign that affidavit when we file for office so that I can run for office and not be lying on it. I have to borrow money for them fancy gold plates we have. So I don't know what a capital gains is about. I don't know that feeling, but I do know what it feels like when your stomach touch your back. That's what they talk about in my district in North St. Louis County, where their representative has to stand on this floor till our feet get raw. We talk about that. So I do appreciate the fact that it's one hundred eleven of you that is gonna finally give my grandmother, my eighty-four and three-day-old grandmother, opportunity to get a break on her circuit breaker. Thank you. The same eighty-four-year-old who had to work and get paid under the table for taxes. Well, she cleaned white folks' houses. They called her Mary, and she called them by Mister and Miss. Those are the people I have in my district. I don't have the people who sit up and concern themselves with what boat they get to buy this year and what vacation they get to go on this year. They make bologna sandwiches and fold the bread in half so that they can feed their grandkids when they come for from school because they can't afford childcare. Those are the conversations we have in my district. So for all the monopoly men on the other side of campus twiddling their rich mustaches and top hats, talking about capital gains, vacations, and what their constituents talk about at their table, I'd love to be invited to some so I can cosplay wealth.
Cosplay.
But don't you dare sit here and talk about us on this side of the aisle who filed. The young the young man, the gentleman from St. Louis, got a first bill he filed was to remove those taxes to help actual people. I can't even swim, as you all probably have guessed by my skin color. I don't care nothing about no boat. Just pass the bill and stop trying to act like it's us over here when it's been you all the whole time. I'm grateful that these things are on this bill. I am. I'm voting on it. But I'm grateful it's here, that I can get some kind of rebate or some some reprieve from tampons while I still have to use them before I have to go get diapers for my age. Thank you.
I was like, I love that. I love that. I loved her speech and the passion it came. She came with the fire. I was like, man, I wish I could talk like that and not have tremble in my voice when I speak sometimes. That was that was dope. I just had to let you all see this video. Yes, I thank you, Ms. Natasha. I thought that was deep as she spoke. I could I felt her spirit. And that's what we really need more of in government. You know what I'm saying? All this shadiness and backstabbing. Like, people forget. People get in office have forgotten where they come from and where they ancestors have come from, ancestors. Like, cause if that way, we wouldn't be having all these issues. Cause one of the things in my speech, I had asked, um. I won't read the whole thing to you. But in my I spoke at public comment today. And I had asked Mayor Clark, um, asking, can I ask, I'm gonna read part of this, uh, what I spoke about today. I said, let me ask you this. Have you forgotten what it felt like when you were an alderman? Cause I forgot he was an alderman. I didn't even know he was alderman in Harvey. Sitting in the in these same seats, didn't you feel powerless at times, hoping for the day you could make a real difference? Now, that's what now that's you hold that posi- that power, you. Ah, why now that you hold that power, why not work with those who share the same passion for change? Stop fighting. Start collaborating. Cause it truly he has lost his passion to fight for change in Harvey. There was a time they said he was a fighter for Harvey and he wanted to make a difference. Oh, I don't know. Y'all didn't see the end of the video. Chappelle Hook said. What happened? He got some new teeth and now he done changed. I said, he got some new teeth and he got some new teeth too. Yes, the truth and the passion was present in her words. Yes. Yes. Shoot, I even talked I even talked about the, uh, they fixed up one hundred fifty fourth street, but they shift all the, I wanna say the prostitutes to this end of the block. I said, oh. Yeah, you know it's gonna be an uprising. Now, again, Flip Chicago Red, I didn't really know much about them. They were very loud. Definitely, definitely. Uh. Um. Like, they were aggressive, right? And I think one of the things that Flip Chicago Red has to learn is, uh, read the room. Like, that kind of talk and saying, oh, they need to stand up, don't be scared and all this. Um. That's what's been going on. And if you just come in just for today, you don't know what these people feel. And again. Harvey. They says majority of African Americans. No. I believe it has changed because I know for sure, I know for a hundred percent for a fact. They got they the on the other side of the road, on the southern side of the road, they got them they got the trailer parks, baby. And you not you don't you won't even realize it's a whole different community over there. It's if if, cause the African Americans don't tend to vote, right? If if those Hispanics get up and vote and register to register to vote and and all them vote. Listen, they gonna tomorrow Flip Chicago Red, they gonna flip Harvey. Yes, indeed. Because you can't continue to treat the people the way you do, right? That's kind of insane. You can't be calling them out their names. Tell them somebody's gay and somebody's, um. What do you say about the other person? They can't do the seem know the pledge allegiance? I wouldn't say I I wouldn't be saying the pledge allegiance. Sometimes I don't say the pledge allegiance. I'm gonna be honest with you because it's not one nation for all. Last I saw, it don't look fair. It's not fair. So why we keep saying one nation for all when it's not one nation for all? I'll sway you. Mm hmm. Ask answer that question. Oh, I see. Uh, let's see. It looks like. Oh, my God. It's so many abandoned schools. Listen. Yeah, and listen, we on my Facebook, babe. Uh. Harvey, Illinois has diverse, uh, ethnic makeup. Yes. The large ethnic group are African Americans. But let me say this, and and you can tell me if I'm right or wrong. A lot of them don't. A lot of them Hispanics. Oh, it's thirty-four percent. Okay. Well, a lot of Hispanics, they don't vote. Um, a lot of them most likely try to stay out the way because they don't want no problems. But, um. And you could tell that and you could tell that. Listen, cause I seen the on my block, I seen the number of Spanish people, speaking people have now, um, moved on the on the block. And on the block on the next block also. And it's on the corner all over. That's what I'm saying is. I don't know how accurate the census were back then. Thirty-four percent and ten percent white and other ethnic groups. The Asians, two point three. Mm hmm. Now, I can see that. I don't recite the pledge allegiance myself. It's injustice for some and not justice for all. I agree. I can't no way. I can no way I can do it. I used to stand up just out of respect. But when I see things are happening and and it's not fair what's happening with us, even just meet me halfway. That's all I ask. Oh, I hit the wrong button. Oh. Ryan's supposed to be coming on. Okay, so look at this, y'all. And this is it. This is how bad it's gotten in Chicago. Um, they are selling. Uh, it's unbelievable. They are selling a high school. I'm like. I gotta smile. They are selling the high school. I don't know what they're gonna. That's what I'm saying. I don't what is going on? Oh, how much they selling me for? On eighty-first and May. What high school is that? Uh. In the last ten years, the Hispanic group has grown even in small towns. I can believe that. And I saw it in Atlanta years ago and I was like, wait, I thought it was all black here. Uh, oh, is that, uh? That one feel like he, Christ. Oh, I'm on his way. Housway. CPS finally wants to sell the old Calumet building. What are you gonna do with it? What are they gonna do with it? So they probably try to sell it to, um. Like, um, charter school. That's what that probably about. I was wondering that, cause I'm like, that's interesting. I didn't think that people actually. Bought those building, but I'm just saying. Well, God, we gotta show up and. Yeah, I'm just frustrated, and I, but I, to appreciate each and every one of y'all. I just wanna make sure I, I tell you all, tell you that every day. Um, let's see if they put any more news out. I'm surprised. Small town USA and we can forget it. We are now become the minority. And I'm okay with that, as long as everything is fair. That's all I ask for. Hey. So much is going on in this news. I was. Okay. Oh, to all, let's see. Okay, so I just wanna get some updates, what they're posting. About, uh, they said, to all the Harvey residents and those who came out in support of Alderman Chapman, thank you. Keep it up, keep, keep it, keep it going. We the people have the power. Okay. Yeah, but they don't have the video. Yeah, see, a lot of, it really wasn't conducive to record today. It wasn't conducive. So they didn't even have like what happened inside the building. To all the, and those who came out, yeah. That was crazy. It's never, is that Chicago? Dramatic video shows two young boys aged seventy-nine in an arm standoff with deputies wearing Minecraft and Star Wars pajamas. And welding a loaded pow pow. Where was this at? Wow, I'm a little kid. Like, we in third world countries nowadays. Well, that's a hot fat. Uh, sorry. Okay. Yep, so, and does anybody have the correct information? Was. Was. Hold on. Was the Pope was born and raised in Chicago, Dalton, or Riverdale? I gotta, they make it confusing, like. We the people do, do have the power, and if we come together for the greater good. Yes, cause there's something wrong with Prisker and all these other people who don't say anything. Anything. About what is going on. You know what I'm saying? They, they let Tiffany go on for so long. What about, um? Oh, you see, um, Father Michael Flager leads the Pope Leo X one B. What is that? Celebration at Leo Catholic High School. Okay. Yeah. I thought I would have more information. Oh, born in Chicago, but raised in Dalton. Okay. Born in Chicago. Why do I keep hearing that he was in Riverdale? Why is that a thing? Oh, somebody already did the video, huh? Well, I guess it is what it is. Well, I, I was hoping that someone will post the video, but no one has. And. And I guess we have to wait until some, Ryan said he will, he's gonna, he hasn't posted his yet. So hopefully he posts it. And we can go on and get some answers. Again, we was all put out the, we all were put out of the city council meeting because we clapped. And he, he warned, he warned them three times about clapping. So he ended, he made everybody leave. And because every, like, a lot of people, once you leave, you not coming back in. So you had to go back through the. Uh, metal detectors. Now they threw away my mace. Oh, wait a minute, what she said? Oh, went to a religious service in Riverdale. Thank you, cause they show. Get me confused on what is what. Thank you, Beth. And listen, if you want the tea, get it from Beth. Thank you. Um, so there's a meaningful Thorin Township tomorrow. I will not be able to attend. But if you find, but I will review it later on that evening. Hopefully, maybe. Let's see what happens. Well, it's time for me, it's, oh, it's ten thirty. Well, I definitely be born tomorrow, and I promise not to be so late. Well, oh, they, the Prisker wants to see us destroyed too. Whether we do it to ourselves or the big boys do it for them. And you know what? I'm glad you said that, Ms. Malone, cause somebody said to me, um. They get money from, these communities give money for keeping the communities poor. That's how they get the money. You know what I'm saying? Put out, oh, put out because of clapping while I guess you go to jail for laughing. Oh, you definitely going to jail. You definitely going to jail for laughing. Clapping, and then they, they, um, they profile you when you in that building. And if you watch the police, they look and look at everybody. I said, mm, mm, mm. And see, the police don't re, I mean, some of them who are, uh, licking boots for the mayor, they don't realize. He's only gonna be there for seventeen month, months. And, oh, Mike, thank you, Amazon. Thank you, leave in vehicle when you inside, uh, my, oh, the mayor, uh, my Amazon mace one, thank you. I know, cause I gotta give me some more mace. I was a little upset, but I was like. Uh-uh, I'm gonna get another one. And your vehicle when you go inside, and that's what I should've did. I should've left the mace in my vehicle. Thank you, Mike. I would definitely give me a mace tonight. Cause I be, I be nervous going, when I say you, I be nervous going into my house, I am nervous going into the house. Because there, there is, there are a lot of these streets that in Harvey, they don't have street lights. And I'm like, in twenty twenty-five, how we don't have street lights over here? I'm confused. I'm just saying. Amazon mace fun. I, I love you. Love you, Mike. Thank you. I am gonna get some mace. Because, and I, and I, and I mentioned it tonight, I was like, I don't understand why there's more police in this building than on the streets of Harvey. Like, I don't understand that. Why? Where does that come from? Why doesn't Harvey, they don't get out the, their cars go knocking, talking to residents, let them know that they're here. Um, build a relationship. But see, some of them police who doing what they doing, they don't know. And don't realize is that. Once another administration comes in, they might clean house. I'm just saying. You need to get an outside lightweight sensor. Oh, let me tell you, made in Texas. I do. Sometimes you hear the Ring camera going off. I got lights, uh, and it tick. And if you walk up to the house, it says you are being recorded. I don't know if it discouraged them. But I got, yes, I got them on Ring camera lights and cameras all around. But still, you don't know. You, you just, I don't know, just feel like, first of all. You just never know, right? Cause sometime the Ring cameras don't get everything. You notice that? And then sometime it stalls trying to replay it back. I'm saying, oh, Lord. But a lot of people, they filing, they said they filing, uh, cle, law, what's it? Class action lawsuit against Harvey. I say, we think our taxes are high now. We, taxes are high. High. We think it high now? They have now, in Harvey, I don't know if you know this or not, but in Harvey, they just passed a bill. If the AD, if your ADT alarm goes off. You will be charged where each time the fire department has to come out, if it's a false alarm. I said, Lord have mercy. Well, I'm gonna get rid of ADT then. Cause I have to pay if some, something like that happens. I live in a country and I got lights all around my house, plus security cameras. I know that's right. They be having, made in Texas is not safe in the country. I think, I thought it would be. I always wanted to live in the country. Sound like peace and crickets. So then they, they are, so they gonna uncharge you for the ADT if you have, if it, if it goes off. Uh, and they, and, and the, uh, fire trucks has to come out. Okay, and they, uh, nowadays it better safe than, sorry, I get that. Say, my bra. I must be frowning up a lot. Ain't no more eyebrows go up that high, y'all. Okay, so I got sidetracked. Um. Okay, so there's the alarm, oh, the water's going up. So many percentage, I already, I bet sixty-five dollars a month. And for a long time, I didn't realize the neighbor next door was stealing the water. I was like, why the water bill so high? Oh, cause the neighbor at night was stealing the water, cause their water was off. And he was a senior citizen. So the water's going up, and the taxes, they, they said the taxes, property taxes supposed to go up. And property taxes, and there's something else that's going up out here. They gonna tax out the, the poor. And they gonna make the whole community, uh. Where developers comes in and redevelop the whole community, the whole town. And all you poor folks gonna have to get out. Oh, she said everything is going up? I know. And, and my, let me tell you, made in Texas, sometimes I just be wanna move. I wanna move somewhere where it's peace and quiet. But I know that no matter where you go, you're gonna have problems. Nothing is perfect. I get that. But I would like to go somewhere where I can at least feel safe when I walk out the door, or feel safe just walking down the street and exercising. That's what I'm talking about. But it seem like everywhere is just getting crazy. And people, and these, um. Addictions, like this fit and all, I said, Jesus. You know what I'm saying? Like, a lot of things are. Are going into di, a different direction. It's going in the wrong direction. And when you have an administration that doesn't understand or doesn't, doesn't relate. They like, the relatability has gone with a lot of these places. You know what I'm saying? I couldn't even imagine staying here another five years. But I may end up being here for five more years. But I'm just saying is, I just wouldn't wanna, if it doesn't get better, I'm not staying. And I'm not, I, I'm just gonna say. Illicit drugs are a score. Yes. Mike is correct. And I see that on, why is my eyebrow seem higher than the other? I see that in my neighborhood. There are street walkers, and sometimes you can see the pimps. Um, we have liquor stores on every corner, and you could tell the people who own drugs. You could tell. But I just try not to let it, I try to be normal, be aware of my surroundings. Hmm, that is true. That is so true. Living in a gated community behind a wall, so it doesn't affect it. Yes. Hey, Laura Rock, how you doing? Glad to see you. Yes, they live in a gated community. Cause there's no way in the world that you don't see the people on the corner begging, um. Or hear the gun, the pow pow pows in the middle of the night. That's why I don't come home at night, when it's late at night. Mm-mm. You ain't gonna catch me out late. Because I don't want the, I don't wanna deal with it. Oh, yeah, sure. Oh, I think Ryan said. Yes, all is well. I appreciate you. So, but something has to give, and we just, all we can do is, um. Hope for, uh, a better day. Uh, gosh. Hope for a better day. Oh, no. Yeah. Heck yeah. It's been ten breaks in. Uh, what you say? It's been ten breaks in. By your house, coffee? Make you scared to leave the house. I'm telling you, um, I think Ryan is still coming. I just got a text message from him. And, uh, in Chinatown. Of real, I just went pa, I went to Lawrence Fish Market over the weekend. And I saw Chinatown was so packed. Like, when did they had time to have a break in? Never a dull moment. Never a dull moment. I'm sorry, excuse me. I should've put my hand on my mouth. I apologize. Yeah, you, every now and then, in, in the summertime, it gets worse. Mm-hmm. You hear the pow pow pows. I pray to God I never see it, see them with it. Do the actual. Actually doing it. Oh, wait a minute, let's see. Uh, Chicago police are warning people about series of break-ins and burglaries in Chinatown and Bridgeport. At least seven homes have been broken into the past two weeks. Whoa. That's crazy. And I bet you they all under thirty. Who's doing it? Are they breaking, they, but they, when they break in, I noticed when they break in, it's when it's closed. Yeah. Yeah, definitely scary. Definitely scary. You see what I'm saying? That's why I don't even wanna, I hate. Hate living in this way. hate living in this way, be fear, living in fear, but I try not to live in fear. Dang, let's look at this again. About a series of break-ins. Listen, they so bold. I saw recently there was, um, somebody, uh, robbed a, was it the second time they robbed a bank in the Chicagoland area? They actually went in. I say, ain't no way. You're correct. One arrest is twenty-seven. Big goofy. So now you're gonna do a, well, that's, oh, that's, I wanted, did he get out? Did, and you know Chicag, well, Illinois, Illinois has the Safety Act. Not what it meant. Hmm? It's getting ridiculous with these robberies. Yes, it's out of control. Like, I don't know. And then they be like, oh, you, if you pop one of them, and he'll be like, oh, he was a good kid. The hell he was? The hell he was? It's getting ridiculous, uh, with, yeah, 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 sorry, read it again. I agree, um, coffee. Listen, they breaking your house and at night, they are pulling on your car doors to see if your doors unlocked, so they can go through your car. Uh, that happened to us, I wanna say twice, someone went in, cause somebody didn't lock the door. The car door. Shoot, I be paranoid. I hit it until I hear go bloop, bloop. Not that it's gonna stop me. And listen, I'm gonna tell you something. And I, somebody called me out on, I used to put the Bible in the front window. So they know I was a Christian and they, uh, they won't break in, in the car. You know that Bible didn't do, they just pushed that Bible to the side? Yeah, I see it on camera a few times, a few weeks ago. Really? Hmm. Oh, yeah, I called the police. Now, not to say the police gonna come quick. Girl, they were still the Bible. Girl, they just moved the Bible over. They act like they didn't see the Bible. I said, the Bible, normally I'm thinking the Bible is gonna say, ooh, I can't touch the Bible. Shoot, I, I ain't care nothing about that Bible being in that window. And then, so, and, and that's even worse because with all the taxes are going up. Uh, what else is, and what they doing, what, what your, what your, uh, president is doing? It's gonna make it just worse. It's just gonna be just pure sanity. Hey, Deborah, AKA Honeybee. What is so scary is the current administration and Project Twenty-Five. Hey, First Lady used to talk about that Project Twenty-Five. People are losing businesses, jobs, um, they're, they're off loss of Medicare, uh, benefits, Social Security, and many others. So you, do you think once he leaves out of office, do you think they will enact a lot of those programs back? They have no idea what in the Bible.
Hmm.
They probably do just lost their way. But do you think once Trump leaves out of office, we got four years? Let's see if this. Damn, I don't know much time I get on that one. Yes, he went in my neighbor's car. She left the door open. He got something out the camera. Something out the camera, didn't catch what he took. Be he, be the, took off, and then he took off fast. Uh-huh. Okay, made in Texas. Yes, ain't that some? Uh, and that's what I'm saying, like, last month, I saw a four man with gun, guns come through the sa, on the side of my house, through my neighbor's yard. They literally backed their car, car into, on my neighbor's carport and went past the carport and onto their grass and backed it up. And then next I know, four men come out walking with guns. I say, God has got to come down and do something to save the world. So we got time to be fighting with each other in these city council meetings. A friend of mine has got robbed a few weeks ago. Oh, really? Oh, my gosh. I remember one time, I, this guy tried to rob me. This was like, maybe, maybe thirty years ago, maybe. And he, I was, I don't know, like sixty-nine, I met my mother on Sixty-Ninth and the damn ride was the train station. And below where, where the cars, where I see the cars on the expressway. He tried to take my radio out my hand. And I said, what? He said, give me your radio. I said, what? He say, give me, give me your radio now. And he reached for it. And I said, before I give you this radio, I'll throw it over onto the expressway. Neither one of us still had this radio. He said, you crazy. And he back, and he just backed away. I said, to this day, I should have gave him the radio. But now that you can't, you can't just, um, you can't do stuff like that because unlikely he didn't have anything to harm with me with. And at that time, I didn't, you know, when you're young, you don't fear. The fear is different now than, than before. Listen, cause they, they got these things they put on the, on these, these ga, these, these pow, pow, pow's to make the, the pow, pow, pow go shoot a lot of pow, pow, pow's. And that's what I'm afraid of. I won't put my, I won't sit in front of a window. My desk is not in front of a window. I used to be able to sit outside on my backyard, on the patio. I ain't doing that no more. No way. Project Twenty-Twenty-Five. Yeah. Uh, you want Amanda to join too? Sure. It look like we gonna have some company tonight. You gotta come on, cause I gotta go sleep. I don't know why every time I gotta go to sleep. So. That's what I'm saying, and they, they got the nerve to have a casino over, out here too? Okay. Okie dokie. Uh. Yes, I said. Hold on, let me text Ryan. Okay, I'm losing my people, but. Yeah, so. Yeah, I don't know, living out here is just crazy. It's like, um, this is not the, excuse me, this is not the Third War country, World Country, but it feels like it sometimes. We don't have grocery stores in our community. You have to get in your car or take a bus to get to the, a grocery store. Uh, of course, we have Dollar Trees, definitely a Dollar Tree. And we used to have a food market, but apparently they lost their license and the mayor, I don't know what, which mayor did it, but they sold it to a developer. So they've been sell, I'll give you two minutes, oh, he said he'll be here in two minutes. So we're gonna have a guest in two minutes. Amanda, and I believe Amanda is one of the peep, the lady who had the, um, major cities have high crime, unfortunately. You know, I was, I was saying, I believe Amanda is the person who was standing next to Kobe Chapman, who, um, who got fined at five hundred dollars. Uh, most major cities have high crime, unfortunately. And it's been that way forever, you know that? But somehow or another, I think I was desanitized from it. I was disconnected. I didn't even, that, that didn't even bother me, stop me. I was always just go, go, go. As I've gotten older, slowed down, and I'd be like, whoa, I see more. And, uh, that wasn't that long ago, too. We waiting on Ryan Gay, and her name is Amanda. Those were the people who were at today's, um, Harvey Board Meeting today, tonight? And at Alderwoman Kobe Chapman's, uh, press conference tonight. So he's, they say two minutes, so. And they're gonna give their perspective of how, how did the meeting go? And I wanna ask them about Flipping Chicago Red. Cause I want him, I, I like, wonder where did they come from, like? I know it was on, on social media. Uh, and maybe that's how they, and why they came. But, uh, they said they'll be back, Flipping Chicago Red. And these are like African-Americans who are Republicans. Yeah. Yeah. We gotta see this, so. He said two, cause I, yeah, he said, give me him about two minutes, only eleven o'clock, and it's twelve o'clock, y'all time, some of you are. So I don't wanna keep you too long. Oh, don't forget Friday, we are having game night. It's Chat Choice Friday, and we're having game night. Uh, we, so far, we doing bingo. Um, and trivia. Uh, I got some trivia. And if you have a game that you want us to play on, um, get Chat Choice Friday is, is game night, uh, let me know, and we will, we will be able to do it. We can do it. But we really had fun playing bingo the other night. That was fun. Poor Ryan fell victim to the meme machine. Yes, and Ryan came out with his, with his, uh, L G B T flag. And he said, I don't know, hopefully he talks about it. He did a call to action for the L G B T community to come out and support him. Cause he said they haven't been supporting him. I said, oh. Interesting. And, um, interesting, so. Allow me a few more minutes, I promise. Hopefully, uh, sorry, my pen is so loud. Give me two minutes. How many more minutes you need, brother? Uh, the Chicago, the Chicago Red got form against Brandon Johnson, I believe. Listen, um, Mayor Clark looked like Brandon Johnson. And I understand why they want to, yes, I hope he will talk about it. Yes, he said he coming, he coming. Oh, well, you know, and I understand why they gotta flip Chicago Red, cause Mayor Johnson, I don't know, he just something wrong with him. He totally like, he like air, he clueless in America. Clueless. Okay. Yes, I'll be talk about it too. And let me show you how this is. While we wait for Ryan to come, our guest of the evening. Oh, I don't have that no more, huh? Yikes. Um, he said two minutes. Uh, one sec. So it was good to see, uh, McCaskill out there. Cook County, what is it? McCaskill's Cook County, they'll, oh, we got Cook County something. That's what, uh, the child Tiffany wanted. Oh. Come on, gee. Okay. Very. Okay. Which is, what did you say? Uh, they thought Lifer was bad, but Brandon turned out to be the, the worst. I bet you, I bet you ten dollars, uh, Lori Lifer wouldn't spend all that money on immigration. Shoot, is Johnson the one with the closet full of gifts? Ooh, Laura, shut the front door. Yes, he is, yes, he is, you know he is. Um, then, this is from Kobe, Alderwoman Kobe Chapman. And it was from her. And, uh, she said, she wrote a letter to the mayor on February, February twenty-ninth. Um, Betty Allen water disconnection inquiry on one hundred fifty-five oh seven Myrtle Street. I am writing to request updates and or details regarding Ms. Allen's water disconnection at one five five oh seven Myrtle Street. I spoke with both Ms. Allen's daughters, daughter of my, of mother, and her mother regarding the water disconnection. And she explained that Ms. Allen owns both as a property. They took one of her properties. Uh, that sits on the, is a coach house, which is vacant, currently vacant. Ms. Allen spoke with the Water Department representative last week on Tuesday, February twentieth, and per Ms. Allen, it was explained that the representative from the Water Department stated she needed to show complete proof of ownership of both properties because the owner listed on the property is deceased man. This past Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, Ms. Allen, um, submitted, uh, show, she showed complete proof of ownership for both properties because owner listed on property was, okay. Hmm, this is gonna get interesting. Uh, Ms. Allen reached out to me this afternoon in a panic because her mother is elderly and war, and water has been disconnected for two weeks. As of tomorrow, Ms. Allen's mother is facing a variety of elements due to the disconnection. So I'm writing today to request the status update on the next steps that have to be completed to get Ms. Allen's water reconnected. So they disconnected an eighty, eighty-seven year old woman's water because they're saying the person who actually owns the house is, is deceased. But they've been paying on the water bill. So they just gonna shut the water off. So I don't understand what gave them the right to, and that's why, and they sold the property. So I don't know how to add, uh, and which is, that is kinda, uh, made me wanna be like, ugh. Uh, how do I log on? I just sent you, uh, hold on, let me, let me send, um, dang. I just emailed you. I email you. Yes, so isn't that a shame? So this is where, this is one of the, this is the reason why Alderwoman Kobe Chapman was manhandled last week in the meeting. Because they wanted to, um, she was trying to ask questions about the water. And no one's really been helping the family about the water and how they sold their home. And no one's really been helping the family about the water and how they sold their home. Hey Deborah Aka, honeybee, Arizona honeybee. People are being deported without due process. Some are citizens of the United States. But current administration wants to fast track certain people from certain other countries. Elderly abuse, point blank, simple. Yes. Exactly, exactly. And. What do you do, right? That's just downright cruel. Now let you hit a elderly, you going to jail. Let you abuse an elderly person, you going to jail. But they seem to just wanna do what they wanna do. They wanted that property. They wanted that property. And because they wanted it. They decided that they were gonna do it a different way to get that property. And they did. They sold part of the woman's home. Now you gonna sell a part of the house. You know what I'm saying? You know what I'm saying? How they gonna sell her house like that? They just don't have no respect. They just don't have, it's just scary to live out here. This is so scary. Deborah, we all need to be alert for that. Yes, that makes me realize there's some things that I need to do because. If they can pull some, hey Ryan, oh, let me drop the link for Ryan. Right, found his way. It's God be the glory. Okay, um. In Illinois, a utility company cannot disconnect service without proper notice or adherence to specific rule. Particularly during cold and hot weather period. Disconnection from non-payment. Oh, no payment is possible. Non-payment is possible, but utility must provide advance notice, including. Phone calls and a written warning and allow the defer payment agreement. I dropped the link. Ryan, so if that's the case, how can they turn? How can they turn the water off though? Like, what rights do they have to turn that water off? Yeah, I know they can't be doing stuff when it's cold outside, but when it's, it's not, it's not even cold out there doing it. Hey Ryan, how you doing?
Hey Diana, hey, good. Yeah, sorry, I just got home a little bit ago. We were. We had some people debriefing after the, the meeting, so.
Oh, okay. And listen, I saw the police behind my vehicle. I said, let me go, cause I want no problem.
Well, you know, Clark, for the most part, uh, Clark was on his best behavior tonight, cause of, cause of all the extra attention.
Yes, and I was surprised to see that so many um, news cameras there.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So I was glad that I was able to talk tonight. You, you know, I told you, I didn't wanna do it. I was nervous.
Wait, did you give your public comment? Because, like, did you talk before um?
Yes.
What's his name? Before um, the pastor?
Yeah, so what happened, when they let us back in, I made sure I was the first one in the door so I can get up and to put my public comment.
Oh, see, I don't like the way they did that because what happened is, um, oops, sorry, from my dog. Uh, I and others, we were waiting to come back in and they restarted the meeting before everybody was back in.
Yes.
So I didn't get to hear any of your comment. I have no idea what you said. I'm so angry. I didn't hear any of yours. And then also, like, when I came in, it was um, Melville King was finishing up his. Comment, like, he was, he was like towards the end or in the middle or something of his. So that's why I was wondering. I'm like, well, how many people before me? Or before him commented that we missed, you know?
Uh, I was behind him. I was number four.
Okay, so I just missed you? Okay, I didn't know. So you, you, after everybody else came back, you were the first one to go up there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes, that's why I stood next to that door.
Yeah, but it was just so, you know, the way, the whole way they do stuff is just all backwards, you know? And you know that they do that on purpose because um, for instance, even when I was waiting to go in the meeting. They purposely said they um, oh, I agree with that. Mike says as a lawyer, Clark knows what he is doing is wrong. Yes, absolutely, he does. Um, but you know, just before the start of the meeting. They were taking so long with security and people were in line. Well, not only did they start the meeting without us, but they also, you know, before letting everybody in. Even if we have been waiting for a long time in line, but they also pulled the sign up because I wanted to make public comment. And I got in line before, you know, I got in line before the meeting started, but they wouldn't let anybody in, I think. You know, until after six forty-five. So it's like, well, obviously they want, they knew security was gonna be a holdup, right? So they knew, they were trying to make it really time consuming. So that as few people could sign up for public comment as possible. See, that is why people complain. That's why Colby speaks up. That's why I speak up, that's why, cause they do stuff like that all the time. And then it's like the person who um. What's that expression? Uh. Pokes poke, they, they, they like to poke the bear and run away, you know? Or they like to throw stones at you and run away. So it's like, they do all these things to suppress and oppress and harass. And then when you complain about it, they go, oh, well, they're, they're so mean. Like, why don't they appreciate us? We do all these things for the city. Like, we work really hard, guys.
Yeah, but the problem is those people work for the citizens and not for one person.
Hmm, exactly, right, right, right. They, they, the mayor and like his four aldermen, yes men, and. They remind me of an abusive partner, you know, it's like, you can do everything right. And they're still gonna hurt you and steal from you and take advantage of you, but at the end of the day, then they're gonna come back to you and say, oh, well Diana, what did you? Why did you make me do this? Like, why are you complaining? I'm obviously so good to you. I do all these things for you. You, you always say these bad things about me and then you're like scratching your head, cause you're like, I'm just saying the truth. Like, you're horrible. You're abusive. But they want, they try to turn it on you to like gaslight you or like, make you feel like you're the crazy one, you know? But like, wait, no, no, no. Don't try to make us feel like we're crazy.
Yeah, definitely. How did you feel about the meeting today? Well, let's start off, how did you feel about the um, press conference today?
Um, I thought it went really well.
Okay. I did too. It was a lot of people out there.
Right, yeah, it was a good crowd, um, good energy. And I um, yeah, so I tried to get out some things that I wanted to say. I know a few people spoke. And we, we, we could have gone even longer, you know, I mean, cause there's just, there's all, there's just so much going on. But I really, really, really truly hope that um. The media and everyone else heard, you know, that it's not, it's not just about. One or two corrupt officials in the South End. Like, there's a lot of corruption and. It, it really needs to get covered, you know? And Harvey's one that, that has, happens to have a lot more corruption than most places, but. By no means are we the only town. I mean, there's so much out there.
Really? I mean, like, why? That's what I'm understanding, why all the corruption? I know it's money, so I get that.
Yes, definitely.
But my question to you is, how did you, I know you talk about the LGBT community. Do you not feel supported?
Uh, I mean, it's not necessarily like. I don't feel like we have a very visible, you know, LGBT community in Harvey. Um. We do, I mean, we have, we have the. In Blue Island, you know, there's Crave, which is like the main gay bar for.
I know that.
For the south suburbs and, yeah, for a good portion of the south side. Otherwise, there's the Jeffrey Pub in South Shore. Um, which is also LGBT friendly. Um, yeah, there aren't like a ton of establishments. Not that I'm not even a bar person anyway, but I'm just saying like, there are those, um. But yeah, it's not always uh. I wouldn't say it's the first priority is to, you know, it's um. For people to, you know, be helping LGBT community. That's one of the reasons why I started Brian's Gay Chicago, because I wanted to be very explicit about it and be like. This is a word that a lot of people, especially if you're like me, maybe from a more conservative background. A lot of people don't wanna even talk about, because they're like afraid, like, oh, that's an evil word. And that's why I put it in the name of my YouTube, because it's like. Gay people were the, were the minority, but like, we're here to stay. Like, we're not roaches to be exterminated, you know, we're not. We're not people to, um, you know, you wanna try to discredit us, so you call us pedophiles, you know? Like, how, how, like, that, that's been happening for how many years, you know? I mean, that's horrible. They used to, they used to, 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 um. Not that long ago, they used to uh sterilize LGBT people. Because they were seen as uh, they were seen as like there was something wrong with you. You know, you were, you were defective. They would sterilize people, they'd lock them up, they'd put them in insane asylums, um. Um, you still have people that are sent to conversion camps, you know, where they try to like make you. Uh, heterosexuals, I mean, you can't do that. You can't really make anybody anything. But it's just like, it's crazy the, the amount of stuff that's out there, you know? So it's just, it is disappointing and what the mayor said is not. Yeah, unfortunately, it's not anything new. That is a very common tactic that's used to try to discredit anybody in the LGBT community. Now, you know what the irony is though? If you look up the statistics, most people that do actually abuse children. Sexually abused children tend to be white, heterosexual, or that's sort of how they usually identify males.
So do you think?
Not gay, but it's just, it's just funny because usually, usually those are the guys that are the, the, the ones that are most. Oftentimes, either they're closeted gay, or maybe they're actually abusers themselves. They're usually the first ones that will throw out those accusations, you know? So it's just, it's so stupid.
So do you think that him using that term towards you, is that violation of your, your, some kind of act? Like, you know, you can't violate sex, uh, age, religion?
Right, like, I'm, I'm looking for a defamation lawyer. Yeah, if anybody knows a good defamation lawyer, I put in a few calls, but. Because I think here's the thing, and this, oh, yes, no problem. Was it, wait, was that a sneeze? It just sneezed? Okay, bless you.
I muted, thank you.
Yeah, I was like, wow, there's a, I just sneeze so quietly. But um. Oh, wait, hold on one second. Amanda's just asking if you're on and I'll tell her, yes. Uh, yes, and then. So you knew the name, but um.
Now who's Amanda?
What were you talking about? Oh, Amanda, she, she lives in Harvey too, and she gave public comment tonight. Actually, because I was. I wa, they cut off public comment signup early, you know, I didn't, I wasn't able to comment about anything, but I was, I thanked her. And um, because she, she basically defended me too in her, cause she said, you know, I'm not a pedophile and I'm not a criminal. Just because I wanna ask questions, you know, and I was like, yes, girl, thank you for saying that, cause I didn't even get a chance. Cause they, like I said, they cut off, they cut off the signup, you know? But um, I, what I want people to notice is that, do you notice the common pattern between like me or Colby or anybody? Clark and his aldermen say this stuff because they want to, um, oh yes, Mike says that exactly, yep. Cause I was actually just, I, I knew that already, but I was researching it the other day, which is so ironic that, that people will try to discredit gay people with it. And it's like, well, actually, if you wanna do that, then all the white, straight males that like. Run all these companies in the world, like, then, you know, let's just put them in jail. Because statistically, they're more likely to actually be abusing, you know? But anyway, um, Clark is trying to come after our reputations. Our work reputations, our community activism reputations, um, you know, see, and he's made that clear. So he's trying to do that with me to discredit me, right? Cause I'm a teacher, I've taught in schools. Um, hello Laura, hello. You know, I'm, I taught in schools, um. Uh, Colby's also worked, you know, in school settings and I'm actually, she's done different jobs, but. But the whole point, you know, is like you said, it's like defamation, like let's make their character so bad. So that we're gonna try to make, like, make my life hard, I guess, as a real estate agent, make my life hard if I ever wanna have a teaching job. Or whatever, and it's just, it's so, um. It's foul, but it's also. I, I just hope, I, I hope people can see what he's doing, you know, it's like, well, he's trying, he will do, he'll do anything to discredit his critics. And you notice he'll talk about anything except where the money's going.
Yeah, okay, let's, so let's talk about it. I found it very interesting, um, the treasurer kept coming up. And he said at the end, I don't know if you heard it or not, he said. We won't get a report because the treasurer hasn't completed the report. Now, I'm trying to figure out, in what country do we go this long? And if you, if you the head of the sheep and, and they're not being accountable. Why you haven't made sure that it's done, if it affects you and the money that it, uh, the Harvey could be receiving? What's up with that? They don't want her to know what's in the treasury or something? What am I missing?
Exactly. So, yeah, that I didn't really, I didn't like at all. So he threw our elected treasurer under the bus, but the, the fact of the matter is she. She has not uh, been allowed to. Or now, um, she's asked for, she's asked for access. But it has not been granted to her. Um, so basically what's happening is that Mayor Clark employs. And the city council employs um, a comptroller, his name is Louis Williams. This was someone that when Mayor Clark was campaigning for his first term in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. Um, you know, he would say, oh yeah, I'm gonna get rid of him. He's a Kellogg person and he used to, you know, he was a part of all the. The misuse of funds and everything under Kellogg, you know? Well, what do you notice six years later?
Thanks, Candy.
Uh, what do you notice six years later, but Louis Williams is still the comptroller? So everything, basically, all the finances are going through him. So Clark knows where the money is. The comptroller knows where the money is, but other than those two people, we really don't know who knows what. And the public certainly never sees where the money actually is, like the actual accounts and the actual receipts. Not the bills list that we sometimes see. We sometimes see a bills list, but, but that. Anybody could write that up there. And I could say, hey, you know, I got paid um, five thousand last week from the city of Harvey because I. Did a pest extermination, you know what I mean? But if you don't see invoices and receipts, like, I could just make that up. I could have done nothing. And I just had Clark pay me five thousand dollars because, right? So to me, none of what they say is really verifiable. It's not meaningful. Whatever the city says, because if I don't have receipts and if I don't have invoices, if I don't see bank accounts, I could just say anything. I could say, you know, Diana is gonna, she just got paid fifty thousand dollars by the city of Harvey because they thought her show was so awesome. And um, you know, and that's, and that's, and that's just the truth of it, you know? Now, without seeing like invoices and receipts and stuff, like, we don't, how can we say if it's true or not? I don't know.
Hmm, that's, now Ryan, you skirted over this, so I gotta ask you the question. What do you mean by, we voted for a treasurer? But then we go, but it doesn't go to the treasure, it goes to the controller, controller?
Yes, so the comptroller who is paid, um, you know, who's a paid city. Um, um, employee, you know, so he's doing all the finances. And he doesn't share the information with our treasurer that we elected. And then the great irony is then Clark's gonna come and say, oh, well, it's the treasurer's fault. That things aren't being reported. No, it's not, you idiot. I'm sorry, but it's like, no, it's not, like, don't blame her. You purposely keep her in the dark. Like, how is she gonna report anything?
But you know, this was, I'm trying to understand and I'm a little slow. How can it, how are they able to do this? Like, if she's been appointed, elected official, she's supposed to have what she needs for the people to do the job of the people. How is, is that, that is legally that you can divert the, the information? From the person that the, the people have given the responsibilities to?
I know, can, can you, and that's what I can't believe and we can't, and this has been happening for. I know, can, can you, and that's what I can't believe and we can't, and this has been happening for years. It's not anything new. So that's what I don't understand. I don't understand how it can happen. And then, and then one of my, I wanted to show you guys, cause I didn't actually get to display them tonight, but I made, I made some signs that I, I did want to display, but it's just. Oh, what'd you say?
Saw you holding a sign, but I didn't, didn't get to see what you were holding.
Oh, yeah, yeah, like I didn't get to display it like I wanted to, but I did prepare some signs, but it was, it just ended up being a crazy mess. But yeah, so one I wrote up saying to respond to his, his issues with, uh,
You don't have to repeat it.
I said Mayor Clark is a homophobe and a liar. So I didn't get to hold that one up, but the other one, which is also very important.
State, county.
Why ignore our complaints? So we have all complained about, just like what you said, we're like, you're like, well, that doesn't make any sense. How can you have a, an elected treasurer who basically is locked out of the city books?
Right.
And we've complained and we've told all the authorities and they do nothing. They do nothing about. So then, uh, my question is, why are the, why are the state county and, and, and the feds? Well, I, I don't need, maybe not the feds, because usually the feds take a few years to act. They take a long time usually. But at least for the state and the county, why are they protecting Clark?
Right, cause, um, if I'm not mistaken, I heard someone says that no finance has gone to the, uh, comptroller's office? Oh, Cook County.
Uh, right, oh yeah, Mandy says he highlighted the municipal comptroller is the fiscal agent of the city, right? So, so how Clark is trying to do it, he's trying to do everything through his employee, the comptroller, and then not share anything with the elected treasurer. Remember, elected people are supposed to be above staff. Cause they're, they're elected, you know? Uh, yeah, he's trying to do the reverse. So he's trying to shut out our elected treasurer and then just do everything through his employee, the comptroller.
But I'm like, who governs, who governs them? You know what I'm saying? Like, Cook County State's Attorney or?
Yeah, the state's attorney, right, should be doing something.
This is not legal or fair or right.
Exactly.
We can't do this. Just like Dalton Harvey has not submitted financial reports in three years with forces and a state audit.
Exact, right, mm-hmm.
That's crazy.
And I, I had my body cam for the first time tonight.
I saw that and I was gonna tell you, Ryan, it was, you needed to put it on front of you, cause it was hanging on the side of you earlier.
I, yeah, I know, I was, it's the first time, you know, I need to do like Vivian and Dalton did and get like a, like a, you know how she had like a necklace?
Yes.
You know, that would probably work better, but yes.
You definitely need one of them. Uh-huh, definitely, kudos to you, Manny, no kidding, deja vu all over again. It's been like this for a minute. Um, that's something. It was funny how.
Yeah.
What do you think about, and no shade, I'm just asking questions about flip, Chicago flip red or flipping Chicago red? You know, they weren't able to get back into the building, they wouldn't let them back in.
Oh, thank you for, uh, cause I, I was wondering what happened to them, because those ladies are very, um, outspoken. I don't agree with them on everything, cause like I'm not, I'm not really a Trump fan, like I'm not anti-immigrant, I'm not, like I, I don't want to scapegoat anybody except for like the really rich people that are trying to, you know, pay off politicians and manipulate things and, you know, steal from like most of everybody else in society. Like they're the only people that I'm really mad at, you know what I mean? So I don't necessarily agree with everything in the movement, but what I do appreciate is that they are one of the few people, especially loud black voices that will call out corruption anywhere. So they'll, they've called it out. I've, I've seen them at the county meetings, uh, city of Chicago. They've come to Harvey before, so as you can see, they're pretty fearless and I really, really, really appreciate that. Um, but it's interesting you're saying that, I, cause I, I thought that they left and I'm like, well, that's weird, cause they were the ones telling people not to leave. So did you see what happened? Did you see them being denied?
I just, I saw a video, uh, on their channel, living Chicago red. And the police told them, the people who have those shirts on cannot come in. And they didn't, uh, they couldn't come in because they were disruptive. And also because.
What?
Yes. Uh, that kind of seemed like that was illegal to tell somebody they can't come into a meeting because they were said they was disrupted because they was with the news.
Yeah, I, yeah, I didn't think that they, oh, oh, that's true, what Mandy says, Chicago flip, yeah, because didn't, what's her name, Danielle was supposed to speak?
Who's Danielle? One of the girls, one of the ladies?
Yeah, she's, yeah, she's a firebrand. I wanted to hear her. Jessica wasn't here tonight. I've heard Jessica, Jessica's an excellent speaker with them against corruption. Um, but I think Danielle was supposed to speak, but yeah, I was disappointed. Um, oh, that's very, I'm glad that you mentioned that though, because I was wondering, um, I was wondering what happened when I didn't see them, you know, I was like, they didn't come back? What happened?
Thank you, Mike, I'mma look that up. Yeah, I was wondering, I'm like, where did they go? So really?
Because they chose to not return, it was because they were told they couldn't come.
That is correct. Yeah. Oh, somebody, Mandy said, yes, Danielle was slated to speak after me. Oh, that's Mandy. I don't know who Mandy is. I don't remember Mandy, I'm sorry.
She's my, my, uh, she's one of our neighbors here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, Martin Johnson, yes, Martin Johnson was there too, yes, yeah.
Yeah, but his video is grainy. Normally he has good video. Tonight his video wasn't that good. It wasn't clear.
Okay. And the rabbi was filming too. The rabbi was filming, I know there was five and seven were there. Um, other than that, I don't remember the other.
Five and seven is not gonna have a full video.
Oh, right, yes, and I, I do have most of it. Uh, my, my phone ran out of juice a little bit at the very, very end, but I, I, you know, I'll post it tomorrow.
Oh, okay, well, you couldn't get in, I was trying to find the part that I, I spoke at co, public comments, but you weren't in there, so.
No, cause they didn't let me in. Yeah, I wanted to know what you said.
Ah, I got my speech with me.
I wanted to know what you said, Diana. Was it good? What did you talk about?
Well, okay, since you asked, I can.
Where my purse at?
Oh, hold on. Let me tell you, I was so nervous, I could hear the shaking in my voice when I was talking. I'm just saying.
Oh.
Yeah.
Wonder if somebody, I wonder if someone got it, right? Someone has to have it on video.
Oh, it's, well, you know, it's all right. Okay, you ready, Ryan? I said, good evening. Good evening. My name is Dee Love and I'm, I'm proud resident of Harvey. I must admit, I am nervous standing here today, but I believe when you see something wrong, you have a duty to speak up. It has been painful to witness the way Alderman, Kobe Chapman has been treated in this room. I personally seen her forcefully removed, not once, but multiple times. I was shocked and honestly disturbed. I didn't see, well, I didn't, oh, that part I didn't say, so I'm not gonna say what that. Okay, yes, I understand these meetings require order, but let's not forget, fresh, let's not forget. Frustrations builds when people feels unheard. You recently spoke about how Tiffany, no, sorry, you recently spoke about how the former mayor of Dalton was disrespected and how only her boyfriend stood up for her. Well, the difference here is the older woman Chapman is standing up for the residents. Let me ask you this, have you forgotten what it felt like when you were an alderman, sitting in these same seats? Didn't you feel powerless at times and hoping for the day you could make a real difference? Now that you hold the power, why not work with those who share the same passion for change? Stop fighting, start collaborating. Remember, leadership is about service, not control. Your title is not a weapon. Secondly, I must ask, why is there always a heavy police presence in this room? But little to no present in the community where we actually live. We, the people deserve the same level of protection that you enjoy in this chamber. Law-abiding citizens shouldn't feel like criminals when they walk into the city council meeting. It's intimidating and uncomfortable, and the truth is, we pay their salaries. A little respect is not too much to ask for. Here's an idea, host a community connection day, let the officers get out of ours, walk around the neighborhood, knock on doors and meet the people who, that they sworn to protect. Show us that our city is safe place. Lastly, thank you for cleaning up one hundred and fifty fourth street. But now the problem has shifted from one hundred and forty fifth to one hundred and forty seventh and Halsted. There's women in crisis and individuals battling addiction are gathering near the abandoned car wash. Why not take meaningful action and partner with outreach organizations or substance abuse program to help these people get the service they need desperately? Uh, and there, there's so much more I wanted to say, but I ended with this. I stand with all the women, Kobe Chapman, enough is enough. Stop grand, she's not grandstanding, she's fighting for the resident. Maybe it's time more of you did the same. Thank you. And you know, that was like three minutes, I had one of my three minutes. They let me finish.
Oh, really? You did great. That was so good. I'm so glad. You said a lot of great things.
I was trying to, but I wanted to say so much more, so much more.
Right? That's how I always feel. That's how, that's how I was saying with that, um, press conference, I'm like, oh my goodness, we could have gone on for like two hours. Cause there's just so much that's unaddressed and there's so much that no matter how many times we complain and people are always like, well, you should sue, you should tell this authority, you should, and I'm like, we've, we've complained, like definitely you could help us, but we, we will keep complaining, but it's like, people just ignore the complaints and like, what are we supposed to do, right? Like as citizens? So that's why I think I'm, I, I was encouraging everyone to, to not be afraid, come out to the meetings, let's speak up. Cause that's the only way I know that we can make a difference is that if we're loud enough, all of us together, eventually they're not gonna be able to ignore us.
Thank you, Laura. Let me ask you, were there only a number of people could talk or limited number?
Oh, for public comment?
Hmm.
Uh, you know, I, it depends, I don't know, I haven't, I, I don't remember what Harvey says, but I, I have seen other public bodies where they will, they'll limit it, they'll, they'll limit it to, oh no, actually, I think Harvey limits it to ten people. But I've seen others, sometimes they'll say ten people max or thirty minutes maximum, you know, which is ten people.
Thank you, Laura, Mandy. Okay, and Mr. G. Okay, cause I was like.
Oh, I, I, I can't see, I can't see what they're, what they're saying unless you.
Oh, let me go back to Ryan. Okay, no worry. The comptroller shall be the fi, fiscal agent of the city and as such shall be charged with the, charged with and shall exercise general supervision over all officers of the city, charged in any manner with the receipts. Uh, we ain't seen no receipts. Thank you, Ms. Malone. A mic receives collection or dispersment of the city's revenues and all funds required to be in the custody of the city treasurer. How they do audits over there? I'm confused. Mandy, she said they started public comments again while they were letting people in. That's why people were missed. Yes, cause when I got up, it, it was still empty in there. Cause they said they only letting five people at a time, so I stood by that door and they let me go first. I said, well, I'm gonna go in.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, make you a good laugh. Yes.
This mayor's.
Uh, yes.
It is, oh my gosh, and did you see, did you see the, the, um, wait, who is DeLove? Who's, uh, no, 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 I'm sorry, there were somebody, who, who's the other gentleman? That's you. Who's the, who's the other gentleman that commented? Wait, was he at the meeting too?
Uh, I don't know.
Master G. Is Master G there?
Master G. I don't know.
Okay, I was just curious, but that rabbi, that rabbi. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, he said, I found his YouTube channel and it's a mess, so he probably wasn't there, he's probably out of state.
Hmm, okay. I just, I enjoyed the rabbi and then at the end of the meeting, cause I stayed till the, you know, a whole bunch of people left with Kobe, um, in protest, cause the mayor was, you know, saying his lies again. But I stayed, cause I wanted to record everything and it got even juicier after.
Really?
After, yes, cause you know, they're all such cowards. So then they were talking all this horrible stuff about people after they left, you know? It's like, oh, come on, guys, you don't even have the courtesy to, to tell them these things to their faces, you know, but that, that's usually what they do. Yeah.
Yeah, that's unfortunate, and I kind of knew that they would do that. Um, I knew that they would do that, but I was okay with them, if they had something to say, uh, about me, um, about what I said. Um, being respectful, but still a resident of the community, um, I think it's disappointing that they do that, to be honest. That's very disappointing and disrespectful.
Right, yeah, cause it's okay to disagree, but I mean, at least have the courtesy to do it to the person's face or to be able to have a public dialogue, you know, about it. But like, like he'll say, you know, it's public comment, this is not a time to answer questions or whatever. But then what will happen is there'll be public comment and then the mayor will, what?
Going to rant?
Yeah, or he, he says that he's an, you know, he probably thinks he's answering people's questions or responding to the public comment. But he just says all sorts of stuff and then you can never respond to it until, or unless you give public comment at the next meeting. So it's like, wait, you're telling people, this is not a question and answer time, but then you get to say whatever you want and you notice the mayoral comment is always the last thing, right? Cause he wants to say, he wants to have the last word. So it's just, it's not democratic at all. It's, it's very much like, well, I guess I'll allow you guys to co, to comment publicly, but I get the last word and I can say whatever I want.
Yes, so unfortunate. I knew that they would do that, cause I heard, uh, Randall L say, oh, I, I didn't get a chance to say anything. I was like, I can't with him.
Oh, he did? He, he did though. He said, uh, wait, I have my notes here. Do you want to hear some of the things that they said? Oh my goodness. But this was after everyone, I mean, did you walk out with, um, yeah?
I did.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I know, most people did, there weren't too many of us left over, but there were, but like one of the things that, wait, what, Randall L did talk. So the mayor had his, his comments and then it was not on the agenda. Mister, I'm the chair and you know, you can't speak unless it's on the agenda, and then, well, he decided, no one voted, but he decided to let all the, all the aldermen, his yes men that were left to speak. So they had, they all spoke at the end of the meeting too.
Hold on, I, hold on, I'm sure Tyrone Rogers had something to say because remember I told you, he wanted me to speak up for him and I did not. So I'm not surprised.
No, I'm glad. I don't think he mentioned you though. Wait, let me, I have the note.
Okay.
Uh, Tyrone says, he, Tyrone says he will not bring any shame on himself, his family, his city, et cetera. I think that's too late for that, Tyrone, sorry. Um, he said he stands with the mayor and he said, all these people, these outsiders, well, let, let Mayor Johnson deal with you. We're not Dalton. Um, he talked about how they have all this debt from Mayor Kellogg, but he said, I am shocked that people would be complaining and saying all this because city services do get done. You're resident of the sixth ward, I'm sure you probably have some opinions on the fact that city services are not getting done.
Uh, you know, I garbage get picks up, picked up, but the one man, the older gentleman, he made it a valid point and I thought to myself, we need to get a group of people out there. That veteran where the flag is, the grass is not cut.
Hmm.
So, it's in his ward. And then I wanted to ask, then I wanted to say, and I have enough room, I want to know, what are those shots by? And most of all, did you hear what the police said on one hundred and forty fifth and Stengelman? There was some shooting, he didn't say what day it was on and they was, uh, somebody was unalive in the house. And I'm thinking to myself, yeah, I didn't bother to tell the residents that this went on in the community.
Thank you, that's, they never, and I've said that so many times during public comment. I said, why don't we get notifications of the crimes that have, tell us what happened, when, who was involved? We could help you solve the crimes, but even if we don't, can't help you solve the crimes, we pay you for that. We need to know what is going on, because what if you had a garage, like someone broke in a garage on your block? Wouldn't you want to know? So you could talk to your neighbors and, and say, hey, guys, you know, it might just be a one-time thing, but just in case, be careful. We had a garage break-in, you know, or on the other block, like, but you know, the only way I found out. Right, and the only way I found out about. Right, and the only way I found out about, I find out about crimes is through Facebook, through, through people that just happened to find out about it. Never through the police.
And that's, uh, yes, and, and I'm like, I'm on a sec, I'm on a block over and I'm like, this was the first I heard about it.
Yeah, right, exactly. It's like, wait, that's what you're paying your tax money for? Like, at least.
Yes.
You know, it just wa- it just, to me, it's like, if, if you just found out about that. I felt like the police report was the only one given because they wanted to make it seem like they're working on safety. But imagine if that was a really, really short and not detailed report. But if he just told you about the thing that happened by, um, by Sangamon there. Imagine all the other things that we haven't been told.
No, at least every other month. Hey, I dropped the link for Mandy if she wanted to come up. Uh, I, uh, every other month I get ceasefire, I think that is, they come to my door and ask me, do you have you heard anything? There's been a shooting over here. I'd be like, no, I ain't heard nothing. The link is for Mandy.
So ceasefire did, did come, okay, that's good at least. But yeah, that it's.
Not this, not, not last month now.
And it's really not their job to, to do that either. I mean, they, they're supposed to be. Helping, but again, that's what we have the police for, right? They're, the very minimum thing they can do is to report on crime. Now, they're also supposed to help solve crimes, okay? But let's just even give, let's just, let's just pretend that for whatever reason they're having issues and they're having trouble solving crime. The very minimum is we should hear about every crime, and I mean, everything. That's, they used to have things called police blotters and they would put it in the paper. They could still do that. There's nothing stopping them and, and they would tell you, and I have old, cuz I do the historical society. I have old Harvey, uh, news bees and old Harvey, um, stars, you know, or Harvey tribunes. And the papers, they would tell you everything and they would say, you know, Mrs. Smith saw somebody trying to steal this bike on this bike. You know, I mean, like from the lowest thing, from the littlest things to if you had major crimes, but it was all there, it was all public.
Listen, they send out these flyers, at least these little expensive bulletins they send out. They can at least put it in there, let us know what's going on.
Ah, that's a good point, cuz after everybody left, the mayor, again. He did this, the last meeting, he, he scolded the residents. He said, you know, you don't even know what's going on. I run into residents and they say, well, mayor, you don't tell us anything. And, and, and I say, well, did you read the newsletter? But he's so disrespectful.
He's definitely disrespectful and he definitely has lost his way. He lost his passion while he became the mayor.
Yeah.
He, he think of himself as a judge and not a mayor who sits on the throne.
Right, and after everybody left, he also said, he said, oh, the carpetbaggers are coming in. He said, I'm a negro. They wouldn't, they won't listen to me because I'm black. They won't disrupt things like this in white communities. This is what he said, I'm the chair and I was appointed to be this, people need to respect the will of the people. He also said, which is a total lie, he said, I never. I never disrupted meetings under Mayor Kellogg. That's okay, we'll go back and find some videos, Mary Clark. And you know, they shouldn't have disrupted because Kellogg was doing a lot of shady things, like that was good. Like that's a, that's what democracy is supposed to be. You're not just supposed to sit there when people like, like Kobe did, right? You know, Kobe was saying, hey, you can't just take this whole lady's house.
Right, hey, Mandy, how you doing? Oh, yeah, that's Mandy, yeah, I remember Mandy.
Oh, girl, you still got your. You still got your nice clothes on. I had to get a, I had to get a comfy shirt on, but you still got your nice ones on.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, no, 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 no.
Yes.
The bra comes off, that's it.
Oh, but Mandy, I'm so glad you, you also able to join us and I appreciate your, uh, words today. And I, you were so eloquent and flawless and I had to read off the paper. I said, I can't do it off the cuff of. My brain. Let them know that everybody in Harvey is not a high school dropout or some illiterate person. People in Harvey do have degrees. Let's not be, let's not, uh, be funny around here.
Thank you, thank you.
Mayor Clark said that in his mayoral comments, uh, no, I'm sorry, correct. Delaney said something like that. She was like, yeah, people with degrees, uh, some. Some people need to be qualified to speak or it was something of that nature and it was like, like I said, I feel like it was a dig at the residents or. I don't know who she was trying to dig at, but I was just like. Again, another disparaging comments that was unnecessary and not needed and if we start pulling out credentials.
Yeah, cuz she brought up, remember, she said, we have to stop choosing people based on popularity. Basically, I think that was her message, instead do qualifications and I'm like, well. What's Tyrone qualified for? What do you, what do you qualify for, Delaney?
I'm waiting.
What, and she always wants to come for me, cuz she calls me the so-called expert. She loves to make fun of me, you know, like, we, we have some experts, you know, and they do real estate, so they think that of. I'm like, excuse me, I, actually, I know and I'm a professional, so. Again, what do you, what do, what, what do you know?
But those, and that's, that's the frustrating thing about being in Harvey. You, it's like the mindset of these people, I feel like I'm in high school, not in. A grown up setting. Where people, let me, and I say this. I stumbled on this, on the other side of Dixie Highway and you see all those mobile homes look like. Another third war country. Those people don't come to these meetings. Why don't you have it set up where they can come? Cuz you know, if they all, if they all come and you, they can understand what you say and they start voting. All y'all be going up in there. None of y'all will be in there.
Exactly.
Really, a good chunk of the demographic of Harvey is seniors. And so they pander, the, the, I personally think that a lot of their strategy is to pander to the seniors because they're the ones that vote. But yet, as far as contributing to the economy of the city, it's not them, it's not that age group. They're, they got, uh, senior property tax exemptions, senior freeze. But you need to be worried about the younger generation that's actually paying taxes. But and then also I do believe sometimes they, they bank on. Some of the baby boomers who did not necessarily go to college, but they were hardworking, blue collar workers who just were trying to make a living. And they want all the perks that comes with being a senior and I feel like they play into that. And they don't question them and they don't want anyone to ask the right questions or the challenging questions. Because then that will force them to think.
Yeah, cuz I remember when Kellogg was in and, um, I used to ask my mother, I said, why he in here so long? She said, because the seniors are the ones who are voting and they not gonna ask no question and they gonna go with what they know. I said, oh, after that, I was done. I went on my way and never thought about Harvey again. Until now. But I wanted to know, I'm, I'm still confused, how were they able to take that lady's home the way they did? For two thousand, sold it for two thousand.
In the mayoral comments, he brought up this letter. From Freddie Mac that is basically confirming that the city of Harvey actually owned the property. And that that's why they were able, I guess, to do this transaction with this developer, whoever this is. But the resident has. So I'm a little confused on. How did Freddie Mac view the property years ago? They have, they have the actual deed. And I understand people. How did the city of Harvey acquire? So there's a lot of missing pieces to this story. I don't, I do, I don't believe he's being transparent about what actually happened or how it was acquired. I believe there was a, there was a, there was a drop the ball somewhere. Double down, double down.
Mandy, you in the matrix. Your internet went out, is it Masahus?
Yeah. I was hearing an echo.
Yeah, Mandy, you're, uh, you in the matrix, girl. Oh, Mandy has feedback. Can't hear you, we can't hear you.
I do see your lips moving though, Mandy. Oh, they, Laura, whoever that was, made a very nice comment, that was very kind of her.
Thank you, Laura. Never thought I would speak up on anything out here.
That is very, very sweet. Thank you, Laura. See, we do have good people here. We deserve to have our rights respected just as people in any other community do. There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be different rights or different expectations for. Communities, you know, depending on their demographics or how. You know, how large it is, how small it is, how rich people are, how poor that, you know what I mean? Cuz otherwise then why, why do we even have the laws? Why do we have like the first amendment rights or? But like, if they only apply to certain people, then, you know, what's the point?
Mandy? I'm not sure, she's still frozen.
Yeah, she, maybe it'll get unfrozen. She's working on it, I'm sure.
No, we can't hear you. Yes. Excuse, but, um, I was glad to see so many people out and, oh, go ahead with your notes, I'm sorry, we cut through the notes. We stop your notes.
Oh, from, oh, from what they said? Oh, yeah, yeah. Uh, what was I gonna say? Clark accused Kobe of hitting the police officer and calling him. A bee. And then he, he proceeded to, to sort of preach different projects, like, oh, we got a fire engine. Okay, that's true, we finally got a new fire engine, but that was because of a grant from Robin Kelly. That was, that was awarded several years ago, that wasn't, that's not really anything that the city of Harvey did. Yeah, it's no.
Or the estate if deceased, okay. Sorry, just wanted to make sure I understand.
Yeah, there's, there's, um, we're gonna look into that too, yeah, there's something not right with the deeds and stuff, so we definitely need to clarify that. He also said a very disparaging mark, the mayor said, well, you know, these people. These people, I guess, critics, they would sell themselves for two thousand dollars. So that is why they accuse us of selling this woman's house for two thousand. Yeah, isn't that, that was very disparaging.
He's sitting about an eighty seven year old woman.
I guess, and then, and then he says, though, this lady definitely does not own the house. He, he definitely, he doubled down on it, he was not, he was not giving up on that, he was, he was doubling down. He said that we would disrupt, you know, they, again, whoever they is, the people that are asking questions. They would disrupt the pastor during a service and then all of his yes men, they all laugh like. It was stupid. Are you back?
I'm back, I got, I changed devices after this.
Oh, this is, yeah, this is nice and clear.
Yes.
Shout out to Apple.
Um, what else did they say? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Repeat what you said about the two thousand dollars.
Oh, yes, and Mandy was there too cuz she stayed, uh. Remember when Clark said after people left and he said something like, well, you know. They, those people, they would sell themselves for two thousand dollars, so that's why they accuse us of. You know, selling this woman, it was just very, very disparaging stuff, you know, very, very, very rude. You know, instead of ser- taking this seriously, like, okay, guys, you're right, you know, something's not right here. Um, let's, uh, let's table the vote, like, that's what you should do. If there's any doubt, table the vote. Um, you know, let's look into this more, let's let the public know we find out. No, none of that. It's more of, oh, they, they're so stupid, they're so this, they're so that. It, they always default to, to like making fun of the people that they're supposed to serve, us, the residents.
Yeah, they, they, they had a lot to say after everyone left and that's why I was kinda like, let me stay and kinda see what's actually gonna happen. And it was, it was their time to, for their, their jokes to come out. Now the jokes come out, now everybody has something to say. There was no automatic comment reports, there were no reports from any of the departments. But now everybody's speaking, speaking and geeking and grinning now. And it's just like, you, you had nothing to say when, when there was a whole crowd here. And there was just like several things that were said and little nuggets of numbers being dropped, but nothing that's verifiable, which is very concerning, like. I believe Autumn Rogers was like, Harvey owe one hundred sixty four million dollars in debt. When we first got here in twenty nineteen and it's just like, okay, we're in twenty twenty five. We have no financial reporting to even know if that is a real number. Um, how has that number gone down? What, what financial remedies have you put in place to pay down said debt? We have, we have no. We have no way of verifying that. Yeah, I think the mayor said four hundred sixty seven businesses doesn't, don't pay property taxes and it's just like, okay. Where did you get that number from? What have you done to remedy that situation? I'm like, and there's four hundred six, there's four hundred sixty seven businesses in Harvey? Is it? I'm like, are you counting the people that do multi-level marketing? Like, who, where does four hundred sixty seven? Where are they?
If it's four hundred sixty seven. Uh, businesses in Harvey, who does, who does not pay taxes, how many? And then you tack on the, uh, the vacant homes, uh. Who don't have nobody, nobody paying the mortgages on or the taxes is on and it sits idle. Cuz I got one by my right next door to me. So let's, just add, just keep adding on. So if you come, I always told, I was always taught in corporate, if you come with a problem, you better come with a solution.
Solution.
So what is the solution? No, none of this jokey joke stuff, that's like, that's childish stuff. These are real people's lives and the money that has to come out of the property taxes. The property taxes crazy out here and wait a minute, and we don't get just the basic. I can't get a full street with some lights on it, uh, paved streets without the potholes and I had to go get a wheel line. Because I got, I keep going over this one street right here with all the holes in it. But I'm just saying, they're so childish, this is frustrating.
Right, anything, anything to avoid telling us where the money's going. They will call you any name possible, they will make up any story. They will do any, it, it's just like a sideshow, you know, it's like they'll do anything, that's what I've noticed. You know, they'll, like, like when Kobe started to bring up the things about the lady's house during, during the prior meeting. And I noticed, it was almost like the mayor got real, he started to get loud and talk over her. And you could tell, it was like, he was like, oh, no, 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 we can't let people know about what's going on with this house. And that's when it was just like, he started getting all worked up and called for her to be censured and then called for her to be removed. And there was no, there, there was no crisis or like reason for that at all. But I just, I think, you know, whenever we get close to getting answers about money or real estate, I notice. They get very worried and there's always some sort of other distraction that is put into place.
Sorry, Mandy, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, Coach, I'm, no, I was just gonna address what Mike was talking about and. Yes, they are trying to go after churches for business licenses and they're not. Churches are, churches in any really faith-based organization is a five oh one C three. So they don't have to have a business license, but again. Because you're not attracting, I'm not gonna say it, you're not attracting a whole lot of new businesses to Harvey, so you really don't have any business revenue to go after. And so now you wanna go after the most vulnerable and unfortunately in the black and brown community, well, we got a lot of churches and liquor stores. So.
Yes.
So now you wanna go after them. You already got the liquor store, you know, business license, of course, so now you wanna go after the churches. And I think that's just, that's just gross. That's gross.
Yeah, I mean, that's your question. Either one of you can answer. Eagles Hospital, does Harvey get money from Eagle Hospital?
They should, it's a business in the city of Harvey, they should. And I, and I would imagine now that they're under the University of Chicago umbrella. I would assume things should be tightened, right? I don't think that, uh, cuz Eagles was formerly owned by seven doctors. And then University of Chicago took over, um, I highly doubt that, you know. And then University of Chicago took over. Um, I highly doubt that, you know, University of Chicago is not doing what they were supposed to do as far as like business licenses and all of the things. Now, is he cultivating that relationship? Probably not. But, um, I would think that the University of Chicago is doing what they're supposed to do.
I don't think they, they don't pay property taxes though, right? Since it's a hall. Yeah, or hospital, cause it's, it's all, it'd all be nonprofit.
Are hospitals automatically five oh ones either is?
I, you know, that's a good question. I don't know what tax code they fall under exactly, but, pay property tax, which would, which would not be good for, I mean, it's still good to have a hospital, obviously. But yeah, it would be good to have, um, you know, more businesses that were paying taxes, cause then our taxes would go down as residents.
Definitely.
And that's what they should be focused on, is getting more businesses here. Whether it's being, you know, national retailers or even the small mom and pops. But there should be some type of plan in place instead of every time we come to a meeting, these businesses don't want to pay tax, these business don't want to pay tax. You sound like a broken record. Like, what have you done to remedy the situation?
Right. Out to the Latino community. Oh, I agree with that, Mike. We definitely have tried, I've tried, uh, yes, yes, absolutely. I try. That's something, and we also have a large Indian Muslim community as well. And I really would like to see them integrated. Um, you could hear the call to prayer during our, our press conference, yeah. And there's so many people, again, they don't realize, they're just like, oh, that's the poor black town, you know? We, there are such stereotypes of Harvey and people don't realize, there's so much depth and there's so much more variety than people give us credit for here.
But I think what happens, and this happens in some other communities as well, Harvey for the most, I would say Harvey is very diverse. And particularly with, um, black, Latina, Indian American. What I will say is that the voters and the legislator are predominantly black. Um, it's a, it's a very, yeah, it's a very interesting, it's an interesting dynamic, but for the most part, the voting block is predominantly, um, older black people.
I was gonna say, wouldn't you say elderly too? Probably like, it definitely skews older. I mean, there are some young people, but it definitely seems to skew older.
Even though the, the racial demographic of the city is changing. But again, the people that come out and vote are the baby boomers. I was telling us, I would, um, wanna say to Mike, if you go to the city of Harvey website, there is a Har- Harvey comprehensive, um, comprehensive plan. Now, where that plan came with, was there any community input? It is a plan. It is there.
Right, yes. And there are some good aspects to it, but I definitely criticized the mayor in that publicly. I said, no, you guys. They didn't advertise the meetings well enough. And basically what they'll do is, is with whatever proposal they want to do, they will market it to seniors especially. But Christopher Clark and his alder yes men, like their little, their little group of yes people. And they, they'll make sure to invite them to everything. Oh, but then after everybody left, then they start to shame people and say, well, they didn't come to the fire engine thing. And they didn't come to, oh, they never come to anything.
Monday at nine AM, Monday at nine AM. Ninety-five percent of the working population, Monday at nine AM. Their jobs, they're working. They got on the eight o'clock train at the metro station to get downtown by eight fifty.
They don't even advertise things very well. They don't notify people, you know, there's, 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 it's just, it's just horrible. Um, yeah, and then they're gonna try to shame people. And then when you see how the, when, when others see how the police and how the mayor are so rude to people at meetings, it's like, well, then why would you ever question the fact that people don't wanna come out to your things? They see how you treat people.
Like, now it's not just hearsay. You, you kicked everyone out of a meeting during public comment for what? There was no disruption. There was no anything. You just, you don't like what people are saying. You only like when it's singing your praises and not explaining what's not right. And you didn't like that. And again, I am assuming, I mean, that Danielle, I'm gonna say she was probably gonna get up there and let him have it. And he was like, uh-uh, clitter home.
Right. Such a cowardly move. I really wanted to hear from her.
Yeah. Oh, and then Mike, I think you're saying something. I don't know if you live here in the Southland or in, or the city of Chicago for that matter. But I would say there's always, unfortunately, there is low voter turnout in the Southland period. Typically, the, out of the seventeen counties in Thornton Township, even though we're the largest voting block in the state of Illinois, um, the average voter turnout for the municipalities in Thornton Township is anywhere between seven to twenty-four percent. Um, even with the foolishness that went on in Dalton, and it was still a, it was, it was a record number of people that came out and vote, but it still was like under thirty percent. So unfortunately, we have a low turnout. But I think that's just,
I think I know who Mandy is. Mandy, are you, were you at the Thornton Township?
Yep, and you were taping. I was standing next to you.
I'm like, wait a minute. When you kept, you was talking, I kept looking at you like, I seen her before. Okay, thank you. Yes, I remember. That, and that's unfortunate. And you know what? Just think about it. When Clark ran for Thornton Township's supervisors, his numbers were low. So crazy. Yes, but it still was low. When, because just think of how many people, how much Napoleon Harris took, right? So it lets you know that people are not messing with you like you think they are. Now, you're right, he did get some numbers. But it would really have to be a serious push that second round to make sure he doesn't get into that office.
Yeah, it's gotta, we, we definitely have to galvanize and organize and definitely get the word out, cause it's just very, yeah, it, it's that and also, which, cause I didn't even realize until, I think Brian told me, I didn't realize they had lifted the term limits on the city of Harvey.
I didn't know that either.
So when I vote, cause I remember keep, I kept my voting record at my parents' house. Specifically for the trial when we had to vote, I think that was, was Bernie Sanders in the primary at that time? Where Kellogg couldn't run again. And on that ballot was the voting for term limits for the city of Harvey, which was basically a tactic to block Eric Kellogg from running again. And it worked, cause he wasn't able to run. But then Mayor Kellogg won, I mean, Mayor Clark won. And so I didn't realize that that had been lifted. I don't believe that, I, I just don't believe, I believe in term limits. I believe people should not sit in seats forever. Like, everybody should have a chance to govern or add democracy. One person should not run everything, because then you get what we see now as the city of Harvey. When you let the wrong person sit in that seat for so long and they just deteriorate, just destroy an entire town and turn away the economic development and, you know, people leaving their homes because there's not good governance.
Uh, no, I, I agree. I was just gonna say that that was, it wasn't Clark that overturned it per se, but after, uh, Clark supported the term limits, I think, and many people did, just to get Kellogg out. But then after that, Napoleon Harris, Thaddeus Jones, um, Will Davis, and I think Chris Welch, Speaker of the House, but they sponsored a bill to overturn not only Harvey's term limits, but a lot of municipalities in Illinois that, that had passed term limits. So if you had a law with term limits going forward, not including anything in the past, you know, then that was okay. But if it include, if it included anything in the past, um, then it automatically invalidated. So that's why Harvey's law got invalidated. So in other words, they knew, they, they passed it to get Eric Kellogg out. They were fine with that. But what had happened is that like Thaddeus Jones, he wanted to be able to run in Calumet City. And he couldn't, because they passed certain limits. And there were other people that were, you know, connected within the democratic establishment, that they wanted to be able to run. And they were running into term limits. And so they had, and so this is another reason people are like, well, why don't you support Napoleon? It's because of things like this, that, you know, Napoleon, Thaddeus, this whole crew, they've supported, I mean, that, that's just an anti-democratic law. It's like, literally the people in these towns, like Mandy said, the people in this town said, we want term limits for you. And we don't care if that includes, you know, going into the past or the future. And they just said, oh, yeah, well, we don't like that. And so they went to the state level and they overturned it. It, it just blows my mind. It's like, how are you gonna go around the voters? But they did.
This is so disheartening. You know what I'm saying? The same tactic, and I'm not a Tiffany person, so I'm just saying that outright. But the same thing that they did to get her out of office with Napoleon going around doing the slicks, instead of just going straight and doing it the right way, this is what y'all did. And then you turn around with, um, the, the term limits and did the same thing. You didn't care about the resident. You cared about yourselves.
I, but I honestly think that the reason why they did like that as far as Napoleon and Thornton Township, those seniors were gonna come out. And they were going to help her retain that seat, because they were so enamored with the refrigerators and the TVs and the air fryers. All the things. And again, we just talked about how a lot of the Southland, Southland towns, the big chunk of the voting block is the baby boomers, cause all the, the homeowners are, those are the ones that, you know, paid the house off. And now they just kinda chilling, sitting pretty, you know, so. Yeah, I, and I, and, I mean, beat you at your own game. I mean, I be, I am for term limits, but I, I see the, the strategy here. I see.
They are, they are playing, they're not playing checkers. No, they, no, they're playing chess. They're not playing checkers.
Exactly. So it's just, yeah, it's unfortunate. But we do want to, to have, I, I want to encourage people. We can have multiple people run for positions in twenty twenty seven. We're gonna have the full city slate, but we're also gonna have park district positions, uh, library, schools, I'm probably forgetting something. So my goal is to always empower, in, in a nonpartisan way, to empower and educate people. And I'm hoping other YouTubers will do that as well. To know, well, how do you run? How, how does it work? Even if you decide not to run, every person should understand what they need to do to run for a political office. Even if you decide not to, because that is the, probably the number one thing that is stopping us from making changes, right? Is that usually there becomes this, there's like this class of people that have connections and they understand how things work. And they don't want to share that information with us. Well, you know what? We're, we're gonna teach ourselves. We're gonna figure it out. Because it's not, it's not gonna work anymore. We can't, like Mandy said, we can't be having these same people getting in these seats. And then that's why nothing changes.
Or sitting in multiple seats, like, that's one thing I've noticed. They be chasing political checks. I'm like, what is it? Like, you, you on this board, you on this, I'm like, I served on one board of an organization and that's enough. But I think if people aren't interested, I would say, even though it can sound cumbersome and intimidating, follow the Illinois State Board of Elections. Follow their Facebook page, follow their Instagram page. They will be dropping the, the candidate handbook in summer of twenty twenty six. I'm sorry, twenty twenty five for twenty twenty six elections. So I definitely encourage, even if you're not interested, like, like Ryan mentioned, you should know the process. It should not be a mystique. It should not be a mystery. It's regularly openly available. You just have to know where to look. So again, I would encourage everyone, if you're on Facebook, follow the Illinois State Board of Elections. Follow their page. They'll say, and it shows everything. And when they talk about the, the process of becoming an elected official, what steps, and share it with someone. Cause you never know who's, will be inspired to run for something, because your voices matter. Where your children go to school and decisions may matter. Where you live and work and worship matter. And while the national election is super important, even though the White House is crazy right now, it's, but the local elections are even more important, because those are the people that, you know, are governing your everyday life and where you live.
And you said, well, that's the, um, Facebook page is the Illinois State.
Illinois State Board of Elections. And they have a Facebook page and you can follow, cause like I say, I know they just dropped like this really cool infographic, like the road to election. And then they made a post saying that they were gonna drop this summer, so I mean, the next couple of months, they're gonna drop the candidate guide for the twenty, the twenty twenty six elections, cause there are some elections coming up in twenty twenty six.
What's coming up in twenty twenty six?
Senator, uh, Ryan, what else?
Yeah, MWRD. I would, I'd love to see people run for those MWRD seats, cause that board is so corrupt. Uh, yeah, there's other stuff. There, there is a lot. I'm forgetting, Ryan Buckley from Robbins shared a post the other day about that, and that was very helpful. Uh, but I don't remember off the top of my head. There are more than I thought, though. Yeah, I didn't, I actually didn't realize there were so many positions up. I know, uh, some of the state reps, like Will Davis, cause they're every two years, so Will Davis, I believe, is gonna be up. Uh, Thaddeus Jones, his, his seat is up. Also, the commitment, uh, or no, no, I'm sorry, no, I don't think so. I don't think Napoleon's commitment seat is up. But yeah, like for instance, I have to see people primary, um, somebody primary, um, Thaddeus Jones and Will Davis, they've been, they're prime examples of what Mandy was saying. They've been in power for a long time. And it's like, okay, so what, what have you done lately? What are you doing for people?
That's, that's where you drop the mic at.
I just always think Paula Abdul, you know? What have you done for me lately? But that's what we have to think, you know? If Paula, if you can't answer Paula's question.
Oh, Mike, Mike said, I'm from another state. Illinois sure has a lot, lots of political offices, boards and townships and et cetera.
Right? It's too many. We really should consolidate. There's, there is a coalition of people who are trying to bring property taxes under control. And what, one of the things they proposed is consolidating a lot of these, like school districts, um, even towns in some cases, uh, library boards, things like that, cause there are so many. Illinois has, has so many taxing bodies. And they all, I mean, it, it all adds up, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there. And all of a sudden, your taxes is very high. So the one particular coalition, they're proposing to consolidate, you know, schools, et cetera, et cetera, as well as replacing property tax with another tax, um, to fund education.
You see this when Mike wrote, I am appalled that he actually put this on face, on his page. That's crazy.
That's good. And, and for instance, in Indiana, Indiana, they have tax caps. Property tax caps, I mean, you know. But a lot of it is, you know, you know, certain rich communities in the past, they have fought against property tax reform. Because it works out well for them. So that's why we have such gross inequality, right? You know, if you have communities that have very high property values, they're very property rich. They're taking in a lot of taxes money. So they have like, and they're still getting state funds for their schools too, you know, but their local contribution is very high. So they have like the housing hall of schools. And then you have other communities like Harvey, that our, our tax receipts are not what they should be. And, you know, we don't, we don't have as many resources. So, oh, what did he say? It used to be twelve hundred per year. How's about two fifty? I mean, it's not bad though. Yeah, yeah.
That's a steal. We used to pay.
Like Park Forest, you can pay per house, it's like a hundred twenty five thousand and then the taxes are eight thousand a year. It's like, woo. And I see all that because I'm a Realtor.
Irish tax there. Oh, okay.
Well, I just gave you an example, Mike, but it's pretty bad.
Yeah. Harvey's not too far from it. And taxes.
I know there's a guy who's doing some like reporting about it, because if you look at the property taxes for the Southern Cook County versus Northern Cook County. But the median home price in Southern Cook County was like a hundred and fifty. And then the median home price in Northern Cook County was like, like four twenty five. And that's the taxes. We're, Southern Cook County is paying way more taxes than Northern Cook County, but they have way more resources. Higher um value of homes, but yet the people who don't have as much are paying more, and that just doesn't make any sense.
That doesn't make any sense. Mike said, that seems like too much.
It is, it is.
What we're getting is too much.
Too much, and none of the schools in the south, in the south suburbs have talking garbage cans.
Oh, right, right. All that, like the, that's why I say it's like some some districts, just that they get so much of. Every, I just fundamentally disagree with that. I think that, I I think we should run society like kindergarten, where they always tell you kindergarten, you know? Nobody gets seconds until everybody, everybody eats something, you know? You have to share your toys. You can't, you know, and then we grow up and we have politicians and companies and society. Where they're adults and they're rewarded and almost worshipped and complimented. Because, oh, wow, look at that person hordes all the the resources and money for himself. He's such a genius. We call him the CEO. He's obviously worth so much more than anybody else in that company, or, oh, look at this mayor. Well, he he's at the top, so he, I guess he deserves to. Have all of this, you know, and it's very weird. It's like, it's not what we were taught, right, when we were little? What did they, they said, that your teacher would tell, would be like, Mandy, what are you doing? Why do you have, why are you keeping all the blocks to yourself? You should, you should share with the other, you know, like you wouldn't, you wouldn't be rewarded. And then, but then as an adult, they'd be like, Mandy, that me, she must be really, she's, she's really smart. Look at that. She has all the toys for herself. No one else in the whole class has any toys. Wow, we should, we should follow her example, like, you know, like, it's so weird. That's what we do with like CEOs. And 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 political leaders, you know, it's like, no, those aren't good qualities. Like, you don't want selfish jerks.
I agree. I agree.
People over profit.
Yes, thank you. Right, exactly.
The rich keeps getting rich and the poor keeps getting poor. And quickly, Ryan, why are they building that road, was the, or that pond? What's it called from the?
Yeah, the retention pond in the park on Myrtle Avenue.
Yes.
Right. Uh, well, Clark wa- wanted to put a park there. And then it called Central Park, which is ironic, because Central Park in New York, they, they basically bulldozed what was a mostly minority. Neighborhood to build Central Park.
Yep.
And so, yeah, his eh his park comes called Central Park, and then what, um. One of the commenters tonight brought up was that, uh, at the press conference was that, you know, over several years in secret. Mayor Clark and the M W R D, which handles wastewater, they basically planned this together to say, oh, well, you know, I wanna do a park anyway. Why don't you say you're gonna do a retention pond there for flood relief? So that way they could use eminent domain. And they tried to make this fake argument, you know, so like, well, people can't argue against it. We get to take people's houses, we can demolish this beautiful, uh, you know, priceless historic church. And if anybody tries to come after us, we can just say, well, it's for flood relief. And even tonight, Shirley brought it up, Shirley, after everyone left, Shirley Derinsky brought it up. Well, how, how could I be against that? It's supposed to help five hundred houses. It's not true. A lot of that information, we we debunked that. And there are many other sites they could have chosen, you know? Um, really, the name of the game is they want it, they want money and they want property. So they are coming up with all these different schemes to take money from people or to take property. I even think this whole thing with the property taxes, I'm, I was asking, trying to think, well, why would Clark do that? But if you think about it, it makes sense. If you wanna take these businesses um property. Now, remember, Clark doesn't care if they're renting or they own. Most of the businesses he's going after, they actually rent their property. It's not their responsibility to pay property taxes. That's their owner, the owner of the property. But if you close down the business, so there's no revenue being made. That's gonna put pressure on the property owner, and for sure, the property taxes will not get paid. Well, then they end up, I think, going to the county. Who gets priority over the properties like that? The city of Harvey. That's a great way. If you, if you wanna force businesses, if you wanna force uh um owners to have to basically surrender their property to the city. Now, it may not happen directly. Like I said, it has to go up for a tax sale or whatever. But, you know, usually the county will always prioritize municipalities, you know, because they're trying to 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 make sure underperforming properties get. You know, utilized. Uh, but you can see, I mean, that would be a great way to to snatch up a whole bunch of properties.
So what I noticed, I think that was yesterday, I was going down, um, sibly going west. I don't know if you know, what's that, Micro Motors? I believe that's the one, and where they had put a boulder in front of the uh business. So they couldn't, so they couldn't get their cars off that lot. I see them people got slit. They got something to move, one of the boulders, not the boulders, but something that, you know, like when you back up. And it's this, um, this piece of concrete, they moved it and it was able to get their cars up out of there. The boulder is still sitting there. I said, I wonder what he gonna say about them doing that. He must want that land. He must wanna, want that piece of land to do something with it.
That's what I think, yeah.
That's what I'm in this dangerous game of monopoly. And I'm like, for what? You're not gonna do anything with it. You have no viable solution and no money to even do it.
Right, thank you.
What are you hoarding all these properties for? Well, we ain't got no money.
Right.
Like, for, for, for what? It's, it's, it's just crazy. You want all this land to do what? For your, for your out of town developers, for somebody that don't live here, has no community ties here? You should be wanting to get people that want to live in Harvey or give them a starter. Like, you should be trying to get homeowners and businesses here. Like you said, that's the only way you can help lower or lower or decrease the property taxes. But instead, you wanna play mon- monopoly and you can go on the golf course and negotiate with people that have no ties and no love for the city and will. Just continue to recap.
One question then, you know what, when you said it, when you said golf course, how much or what did that, um. That, uh, was it an estate or a firm that bought the land from that lady for two thousand dollars? What did they have to do or give to Harvey to get that property? Like, did they had to give the mayor some money, or was there a song, you know, a soft, uh, you know, on the hands?
Yeah, see, it had, it it was a no, what was it? Maybe a no cash bid or a no cash auction? Some, it's some, they did something. Cause I'm like, cause he said, oh, we have this letter from Freddie Mac that gave us the problem. I'm like, Freddie Mac was not in the business of giving properties. They do mortgages, like this, something ain't adding up here. Trust but verify. Something's not adding up. Like, if Freddie Mac does mortgages, so why would they be in the business of property and wanna give this, this house? This, this property. To the, to you all. When there's all these other properties that's literally sitting vacant, and you choose this one that literally has a person sitting in it.
Right.
And it has your original deed? Even if it was for property taxes. The, just don't, the, first of all, the uh owner is supposed to get the first right of refusal. And so I'm like, well, what? Documentation or letter went out to them and when was it a part of the auction tax sale? Some, something's not adding up here.
Right. And don't forget, that house is in our, our, on Hundred Fifty Fifth. That's, that's one of our most historic streets with the, you know. Large uh historic homes that traditionally, you know, are some of the most expensive in Harvey. So again, why are you giving it away? I I just said basically it's giving it away. If you're trying to give it away for two thousand dollars, and that's like, that that's within one of our nicest, you know, districts of of residential properties? Like, to me, like you said, Diana, something, you you do wonder, like, what else is happening?
It's not passing the smell test.
Right, right.
When he said Freddie Mac, I'm like, you could have said HUD. And I was like, okay, well, maybe that makes sense. But the mortgage company?
He made it sound like, to me, it's make it sound like somebody refinanced the home. Did I read something that somebody, they refinanced it? Or they owe money on that house?
I I'm not sure. That, that's what I, I wanna know. We, we definitely need to know more. They never should have voted on that. Also, when, you know, it took six years for for the mayor to finally put a list of city-owned properties on the city website. So they finally did that recently. Uh, they had been denying that the city even owned that many properties for years, which was crazy, because it was, people knew better. But you know what I mean? It was, this is the kind of stuff that they get away with, because the authorities don't step in when we ask them to. So they just lie to your face about things. And especially because I do the Historical Society, I do real estate. I wanna see these old properties fixed up and used, not left to sit. And they call it demolition. In in preservation work, we call it demolition by neglect. So politicians are famous for this. They will let a city property sit for years and years until the neighbors get sick of it. Instead of saving a beautiful historic building, then then they they use, you know, they use that. And they're like, oh, well, it's a nuisance now, so, uh, we just have to burn it, or, you know, we have to knock it down or whatever. And and it just, you know, it just, it's horrible, you know, so the, all this stuff is done purposely. And and, you know, it's just, we we deserve better, you know, Har- Harvey deserves better. And no one needs to be living near all these empty ghost houses, like, that just have sat on the city books for years and years and years, you know? So now that we have a list, great. But then what I said is, how do you determine to whom you're selling them? There is no accountability. They wanted to vote in one meeting to sell that house to a company in Or- based in Orland. And then they wanted to sell other properties to J and T Group, which is this group that, again, the mayor brought in. The residents did not ask for that. The mayor decided to bring them in to handle a lot of the properties the city owns. And they're based in in New Lennox, so then they voted in that same meeting to give more properties. You know, on Hundred Fifty Fourth Street, just west of Wood, between Wood and Dixie Highway, there's some of these, they're really solid, old, like from fifties and sixties of uh brick apartment buildings, you know? And um, so they basically just gave away several more of those to an out of town investor company. No, we have, we have contractors here in Harvey, we have people here in Harvey. They would love, if they would be given a fair chance. They would love the opportunity to fix up those buildings themselves and and rent them out or sell them or something. Like, if you, if you notice, drive down Hundred Fifty Fourth someday, in that little stretch between Wood and Dixie. And there are at least two or three buildings that was in the past year or two, they've been um painted gray. And I'm almost certain, I know one of them for sure, but I I'm pretty sure there was another set of buildings too, that they were, they were sold to um one of Mayor Clark's campaign donors. You know, it's great. I mean, hey, they fixed them up and they're using them. But why are these properties going to companies that only the mayor really knows anything about them?
And they have no community ties here. And something you brought up that was really interesting, like we all. Well, bothers me, he's not forward thinking. And in my opinion, like, when you look at real estate, you look at the city of Chicago, black people are getting pushed out the city. Gentrification is real, it's happening, they're pushing it. It it is, it ain't just downtown is not gonna be the only uh expensive place to live in the city. Sixty First and Cottage Grove is gonna be expensive to live there. It's getting there now. So why wouldn't you say these, we already went through this, when they tore down the projects? They gonna move the black people out. They either go south or they gonna go west. South is Harvey, Markham, Dalton, Phoenix. West, Bellwood, Maywood, that little section in Naperville where they put all the black people in apartments that don't have those mini mansions. When you see, you have the foresight, you say, how can I prepare my city to have this income of young people or starter families? Come to Harvey, start your family here.
Yeah.
Get these nice homes. And if you wanna move on to something else, because it's gonna be expensive to live in the city in the next five to ten years. And you are not preparing, let me prepare my city to to welcome these residents, to welcome um businesses. Because we got the metro right here. So I, I, if I work downtown, I do work downtown. So then I can just get on the metro and go back and forth. So it's not like you're, you're moving to Harvey will be a disruption to the work, to city workers and people working downtown and all of the things. So we have, we're, we're really positioned in a great, the city is really positioned in a great place between the public transportation. I fifty seven, two ninety four. You really can get around this, the, get around really well. It's just that we need the right administration in place to have the foresight to see that and say, how can we prepare our city to welcome new businesses? And new homeowners to Harvey. Like, how can we work them, and what can we do? Because we have a lot of vacant buildings and strip malls and stuff. We need a Chick-fil-A, we need a Starbucks, we need those things. And those things are accessible. And we got the, we got the the traffic to do it. So what's happening? Cause if you ask me. You see, that's the perception, that negative perception of Harvey that we gotta dispel. Like you said, people don't feel safe for. I've heard, I've heard from other real estate investors say, hey, I tried to buy a property in Harvey, renovated and rented, and he said, I got so much flack with the city. He said, I just stopped the project like this. So it's like, these conversations are happening. And it's like, we gotta get the right people in place so we can one dispel this Harvey is bad and Harvey is scary place. This is about all we got left. I mean, eh, cause I don't know where you gonna go. No shade to, you know, the other Southland towns, but if you think the property taxes is bad in Harvey, you don't even wanna talk about Olympia Fields and Mattson and Riston Park.
Country Club Hill.
It's double digits. It's scary. Like, what? And they, you know, so it's like, well, where everybody gonna go? Harvey is it, but we gotta have the right people in place that have the the foresight to see, and then they even stretching the red line. The red line gonna go all the way to Chicago Heights.
Where are you gonna start that project?
They started it now. It's already started. The next stop is Hundred and Thirty. The red line gonna go all the way to Chicago Heights. Again, part of the whole gentrification plan for the city of Chicago. So again, we gotta be in position. Because ain't nobody gonna have nowhere else to go. They ain't gonna be, they can't, they're not gonna be able to afford to live in the city of Chicago. Not even past Hundred Eleventh, if you really wanna take it there. So we, with the, with them doing the National Landmark with the Pullman Project and then the Obama Library. It's gonna get expensive to live there. And so what do you do with these young working professionals? A good chunk of us are elder millennials or Generation Y. Some of us have already started our family, establishing our families, moving up in middle management. Oh, you know, we gotta, you know, some millennials got a coin. Well, where are they gonna spend?
I know, a lot of y'all got a coin.
What, what we doing? Like, Harvey is next up, so we gotta position the city. We gotta have the right people in place, and they gotta stop with
Yes.
This lack of transparency, y'all playing monopoly with all these properties and just sitting on it, for what? No reason. Ain't got no money to fix them up. You can't do nothing with it. So it's just. And giving them out to the highest bidder was crazy. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So really, let me say this two things. I think, really, I think like now is the time, it's time to move in silence. You see that they're not gonna move or adjust. So while you're not moving and adjusting, everybody, we're down here making moves, getting people in place so that we can, in seventeen months, um, get it and have the, who we need in or, in in that seat to be able to make things move. Because if they know what your left hand is doing, then they're gonna try and really try to be sneaky with the right hand, you know what I'm saying? So.
I don't think, I don't think it's bad to, I, I, oh, wait. Said as close that I theorized before the real system. Oh, interesting. Um, but I, I, I know what you're saying, but I think, I think actually, believe it or not, it's in, gonna come up so fast. I, I think um it's okay to, just to announce, because like I've told people, I'm like, oh, I think I'm gonna run for mayor. I would love to see people start announcing and start preparing and educating and fundraising now. I wanna see as many uh people as possible run for as many positions as possible, you know?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying.
I think it's okay to say it now, just because honestly, it's gonna be here before we know it.
No, I understand what you're saying, Ryan, but like, even with yourself. Now is there, since they know what you're trying to do and what you're doing, it's time to split dirt on your name. Like, it's almost, you have to move differently with these people. And you have to think ahead.
Yeah, but they've been trying to, they've done that for me for years anyway. Something, it's nothing really new, but yeah.
But I know you understand you saying it's not new, but it's like, we, we have to be. We say, we have to start playing chess also. And also, the the house next door to me, and I just gotta put it on record. It's abandoned. And the people, I don't know, the people who own the house.
I think he lives in California. Now his mother lives somewhere in the Southland. But they stopped working on the house because they kept getting fines on the house. And so they just left the house, just been sitting and they just stopped paying the taxes and everything. Do you know how frustrating to see a house that is abandoned? The garage is falling apart? Yeah.
And that's another thing. Y'all talk about all this money and you're not even finding the people that own these properties.
Preach. And they're trying to get businesses out. Businesses are actually making money and paying revenue into the city coffers. They're trying to get those businesses out.
When I, I, I work in finance and when I worked in banking and we had bank-owned properties. And I remember developing that report. And if we got fined, the CFO was lit. Because some towns, there are some towns in the west suburbs and the south suburbs, they will find you every single day.
Right.
Until if that, if that grass is not cut and that's a bank-owned property, they gonna keep sending them until you do it. Is it boarded up? Our community, we, we need it to be boarded up. Every single day, like I'm like, there's a revenue stream right there. Who owns these properties? You need to keep the grass cut? You need, it needs to be boarded up. And if it's not, we gonna find you every week until it's done. That's an instant revenue maker, but instead, y'all wanna charge eighty dollars for CPR classes at the fire department. What?
Right.
Yes. Read the Harvey newsletter. Read the most recent one.
Eighty dollars, I ain't gonna get it done cheaper.
City, the, the fire department is charging eighty dollars for CPR classes. Don't believe anything I say. Go read it in the newsletter. And I said eighty dollars when they giving them out for free. The American Red Sox do that for free. The Girl Scouts do that for free. Why would I give you eighty dollars? Like again, another way to make money because the city is broken. Nobody wants to say it.
And first of all, when those newsletters come, I look at it, I glanced at, I said, what date is this? It's always past the date. And I said, this is old, I just tossed it in the garbage. I don't even read a doggone thing no more, cause it don't make no sense on fancy paper. Who's paying for it? Hmm, we are. But I know what you mean. It reminds me of the stuff that Tiffany does, you know, or like, I don't need a glossy multi-page uh, magazine sent out every, like I, and I save all them, but yeah, it's like, it's like a, like a pile now like this, you know, it's like, that's a lot of money to be sent to every address in Harvey.
Every address and then it's not even, um, and then all them sitting there wasting money. People print is not, is, I'm not saying print is out, but it kinda is out. And so why are we spending all this, again, to look like you doing something? To look like
Exactly. Right.
Fancy graphics on camera.
Yeah, that's why you say that. It's like, oh, we got this fancy paper, but these, we got vacant homes. How you gonna act like we? We got, we got some problems. This ain't mapping, ain't mapping. No, you're right. But he's, but you notice again, it's all, it's like the Wizard of Oz. It's like, do not look behind the curtain. You know, so anything to distract you, you know, they're like, but, but how can you, how do you dare question us? We give you nice color brochures in the mail. And then I wish you wouldn't.
At the end of the meeting when he kept saying, oh, um, we, you beating up on the, the city workers and you all are doing a fine job.
Yeah, that was, that was fake and unnecessary and not called for. Who's beating up on the city workers? I don't get that. Nobody.
Nobody.
First of all, we, we the people of the United States of America have a right to voice our opinions, especially if we're spending our money on it. And it's like, if you go to a restaurant, you don't like what you eat, you're gonna have to pay or you're gonna speak up and talk to a manager. It's not about we're beating up on someone. We want services that we're paying for, we paying for. He takes this the wrong way. He, he, he talks to people like we're kids and that's kinda, your pressure go up. Right. Always. Well, that's what he always says about me, that I'm claiming I'm disgruntled because uh, I wasn't made the real estate person for this. I'm like, oh my God, that's not the truth. That's not what happened. But you, you know, and his IT is always the victim because that's what narcissists are. Narcissists, they can never accept responsibility. Um, particularly for mistakes. They're always the victim. They're always the victim. But why does Colby come in and try to make trouble? Oh, why does Brian say I'm not doing this with the properties? Oh, oh, oh. You know, he's always the victim. Oh, poor Chris. So unfortunate. But things have never changed. And this term, how did he get to two? I didn't vote for him and I didn't wanna vote, I didn't, I didn't vote for McCaskill. I just, I think I found a random person on there and voted for. Right, right. Well, the one nice thing is that now with the, the current, current Harvey Law, what did state on the books is that we have a primary. So if there are four or more uh, people running, uh, you know, hopefully that people that make it on the ballot that are booted by, by challenges, you know, cause they will do that. They'll try to, to knock you off the ballot. But it, so therefore um, or more, they uh, you'll have to do the primary and then they'll, they'll take the top two to the general election. So in other words, that, that, that's another reason why I'm telling people, hey, if you wanna, if you wanna run, um, start making your plan now. If you wanna print is not out, it's for seniors. Oh, yeah, that's true. Seniors do like
That is a valid point, yes.
But I don't think it has to be that expensive though, you know, like they could, they could probably do it not so much glossy. Car stock is for him. Right, right. And, and, and just make it simple. And also I have to say, it's full of lies. Like when the mayor was chastising people again, like I talked to residents and they said, they didn't even read the newsletter. I'm like, but I, I don't even, I love knowing what's going on in Harvey and I just glance at it because I start to vomit if I read it too closely because of like, oh, that's not true. Ugh, ew, ew, they said that. Oh, no, that, that's, you know what I mean? It's just, it's full of lies. So and then when you try to ask, if you try to ask to get the real information, you get ridiculed, you get thrown out, you get yelled at, you get ticketed. So it's like, that's why I say they're treating us like an abusive spouse. It's or an abusive partner. It's no different, you know? You get beat up, you get treated horribly, and when you complain about it, you know, they try to gaslight you or they're like, well, you're so ungrateful. I do so many great things for you, Mandy. How dare you question me? You know, and it's like
He brought that up in the meeting, talking about, we do a lot, the second and fourth ward, which ironically is um, Tracy and Kobe's ward. He's like, you see that new building next door to City Hall? That's the second ward. That's to make you look good, sir.
Right.
And it just happened to be on her ward, but don't act like she was spearheading the project and you, you green-lighted it. You were gonna do it whether you got the green light from her or not. And the parents, I mean, I, I, and I, I don't, I'm not saying I have anything against it, but to have that building and then people can't even walk to the store, like
What's the, to the liquor store on the corner? And a grocery store to go to.
Like, it's like, what did you bring in these? You built this new building at these, all these new residents would not put proper things we need to get by and get around like that.
But the, you know, the issue I have with, you built that building, you could have took that same money, whoever who owned it and build on these lots so you can give um, and put the, put the, put these lots back on the property um, roll call. You know, all these people in this, this building, what, what happened if all the Section Eight people get in there? No shade to the Section Eight people.
And those, them folks down in DC trying to cut the program. So were you banking on fifty percent of that building being occupied by Section Eight vouchers when they're trying to cut the program? So now you have to do market rate rent and is it gonna be affordable? Like what was the goal and then goal here? I mean, granted, nobody was anticipating him winning again, but here we are. But with their, what they're saying, like how does that affect the property management? How does that affect the residents? I don't even know if it's, if it's at capacity or even filled yet. But like, that's another question too. It's like, okay, we built this building. Was it the goal to have fifty percent of the residents be hit Section Eight vouchers and they're cutting it and now it's market rent and who are, is, do you think people are gonna be willing to pay market rent to live in Harvey? With no businesses around?
Right.
Like, yeah, what we doing here?
Rent, uh, I'm pretty sure, I mean, it, it, they don't have to uh, have voucher, but it, because it was built using Ida funds. Uh, Illinois Department of House, Illinois, what's Ida again?
Illinois Housing Development Authority?
Yeah, I forget what Ida, I developed, yeah, I forget exactly what Ida stands for. But yeah, basically it's Illinois Housing. So, yeah, so like it has to be subsidized and everything, da, da, da. But the, the irony of this, uh, is it a mixed-use building?
It's all residential, it's not commercial residential.
I, that's, when I was in the Planning and Zoning Commission, that's one of the things that I pushed for. I said, you know, I'm glad you guys are getting ideas for projects for downtown. But I said, this, it's our downtown, like it should be mixed-use, like that we should be able to put something on the first floor, you know, and they said, no, that's not what it's gonna be. But the, the whole problem with this project and the other projects that Clark does is that no one was ever asked. He just pushes things on people. He just pushes things on the city. There were so many people that came out over a year or two to protest that building um, right next to City Hall, because either they didn't want um, low-income renters or they thought maybe, who knows, maybe they thought that was too high. You know, whatever people's concerns were, the point is they should be heard, right? Now, I'm not saying that Clark had to drop the project. I think like for me, if I'm saying I'm gonna run for mayor, well, I have a lot of visions, a lot of things I'd love to see. Um, oh, Hager County. Hager County, Cook County. I, um, I have a lot of things I'd love to see downtown. You know what I mean? Like, it's fine to have a vision and push for it, but you also have to listen to people. So for instance, I said, one of the things that the mayor could have done is when people complained about that project, Clark asked the developers, exactly. It's all about, I think he's getting paid for this stuff. But um, but he could have even said, okay, you guys don't want subsidized housing. I understand. I still wanna push this project. I still think it's good. But how about this? Let's make it senior housing. Would you feel more comfortable with that? I can tell you so many people in Harvey would, that would, that would have done a lot to calm their fears, you know, they would have said, oh, okay. Okay, well, if it's, if it's limited income, but it's senior housing, okay, okay, well, we, we feel more comfortable with that, you know? Because, right, people had in their mind, they were, and they were complaining. They were like, there's gonna be a whole bunch of youth standing on the corner and they're not gonna have anything to do and they're gonna join gangs and start dealing drug, you know, but you, he just dismissed it. And he just, he just said, well, everybody who says that is just against progress in Harvey. But that's not, you can't deal with your people that way. You don't have to drop the idea, but you know, try to compromise or something, you know? So that's what I had said. I said, well, why didn't he just, why didn't they just say, okay, let's make it a senior project? You know? No, there was no compromise. It was his way or the highway. And he got, he got what he wanted, but that's how Clark does everything. But my question, back to what I said before, I don't have a problem with them um, building what have you. But I have a problem where you put it in one portion or one section of the city. And when the other parts on the outlining of the city looks a certain way, it's unfair to those who live in the outside of the, this like one hundred and fifty fifth on each side of the, the, in the neighborhood who are paying their property taxes, but they're not getting what they need or improvements in their area, but you're, you're spending that money on one hundred and fifty fifth, the downtown Harvey. One thing I'm gonna say, and I don't mean to be cruel or mean, but downtown Harvey is never gonna look like it did in the nineteen eighties anymore. Because a lot of those places got tore down, vacant lots, and that's it. But why can't we work, take this money and build up these homes and these, and then, and the, and the streets and these houses and these vacant lots and his alleys that looks like third war countries. Split money then, those who pay, give the people who actually pay their property taxes what they should have. Not the people who just moved into this apartment, who is not going to contribute to the property tax. They're gonna pay a certain amount, but there's no ownership. We need more ownership. Right. No, no, I, I agree. And I, I think it's, it's great to, to, I wanna see a vibrant downtown and that, that's awesome for the city. But this is what I mean where it's like, oh, jobs, trades is what Harvey needs. I agree with that too. Manufacturing, definitely. Um, one hundred and fifty fourth street, he never asked. He decided to redo that. That was one of the few streets in Harvey that was actually in pretty good shape. So we still don't know what happened to all the beautiful historic bricks that I'm assuming somebody sold and, you know, had took the money. Um, they tore up the beautiful old, you know, trail, uh, what do you call that? Trail, trolley, you know, tracks and everything, yeah. So they ripped up all, there was no accountability for what happened with the bricks, which are pretty valuable and are really, just really cool too. Um, and then, you know, and like I said, and redid a street that didn't need to be redone. And then you have people like, um, yeah, like one of the young ladies that ran for uh, a school board position. She lives west of Dixie Highway and their street, now there are only a few houses on that street, but their street, yeah, that looks like the moon. Like they have to, these residents have to drive that and there's no, there's only one way in and out of their area. Because the city closed off Western Avenue, cause there, that, that, you know, there is like a Western Avenue, West of Dixie Highway that would, that people used to go drive. So it's, it's, you know what I mean? It's like, huh? Like you, you just redid a street that didn't need, that was fine?
It seems like he just does things to say, things are getting done, but there, no one's looking at the data, no one's looking at, well, what's the purpose and what's the, the vision and mission behind this project and what other things are more pressing? Like I think, I honestly think that things just get done just to say it's done. Even with like, and I go on this rant all the time, that those two community centers that they built, which the gentleman said today reminds him of a two-car garage. And it was just like, yes, because it's like, it doesn't even like it hold, it could hold a hundred people. There is no parking. We literally have a community center right there on a hundred, was it a hundred and fifty third? No.
On, on center?
Fifty-four? Yes.
There's that one on center that people used to use.
Yes, I was, I was one of them. I was a Girl Scout troop for your Harvey. It is two floors. We would, we would hold our, our meetings there. And there was a church that used to have Bible study there. There was a lady that did line dancing. There was, they had two floors, so people would rent it out for funerals. And it had, now I will say, it had plumbing issues and roofing issues. Those, but it was a usable building. And that's all you had to do. It would have cost less money to fix the current community center that everybody was using versus building these two that can't hold a hundred people, no parking.
Right, right.
It looks like it's eight hundred square feet at maximum.
And, and did he even ask? He never asked. And he never does. You talking about the satellite buildings that he ain't finished, it's just sitting there idle with bricks? A few, well, a few of them are done. I think, what, did they finish maybe a half of them or something?
No, two of them are done. Two of them are actually done. And they say, community center coming soon.
Well, re- remember, um, remember when people were like, uh, asked them during the community meeting too, to say, well, what happened? Why weren't they finished? And then he said, oh, well, we need more money. But the grant that supposedly our rep, Will Davis, got us, the grant was supposed to pay for the completion of all six. So this is where you never get anything answered. Well, what do you mean, you, what do you mean you need more money? But the grant was supposed to pay for all. So what happened with the money that you got? Did you send it on something else? They, they built too fast. They built too many, yes. They built too many. You should have did one first, fix it. And then we done go to the next one, so it's not sitting there idle. It's one on Halsit. It looks, it's two on Halsit. I'm like, what is it? You just contributing to this madness here. Right.
Cause all you do, build this building, ain't gonna get used. And here we got another building on the road that you gonna sell. For what? I mean, I don't even know. It can't hold a hundred people, maybe a small church. Then you gonna try to tax them? Like it's just like, we literally have this beautiful building sitting right here. And all you had to do was do the internal work to fix it, which probably would have not even made a dent in the grant funding.
Mm-hmm.
Instead you went and built it. But again, I think they just do stuff to do stuff. They don't analyze the inventory they have. They don't look at projects already being done. Like y'all just don't.
Right. And what I'm
Say, I did it. And it's like, but why? Did it make sense? Was it, was that a good use of time and money? Was it? No.
Right. And I wonder how much, like when I went to speak at the Cook County uh, board meeting, where I mentioned, just cause I knew about the fire hydrant grant, you know, and I said, are you guys checking up on this? I said, you, you know, you, you supposedly have given at least one, if maybe not two, um, you know, series of grants for repairing fire hydrants, fire hydrants in Harvey and they're not repaired. But like, it, it, it just always would shock me, you know, and um, so I think I definitely hit a nerve there and supposedly, uh, you know, they're looking into that. But it's like, the people that are even giving the grants, it's like, well, sh- shouldn't you be following up? Like, where are you, you just gave Harvey, cause I remember a few years ago, I don't know if you guys remembered this, but um, because they announced about, it was a block grant, a, a block grant from the county for the fire hydrants. Um, because they an- announced about, it was a block grant, a a block grant from the county for the fire hydrants. And all they did was go around and paint a whole bunch from red. That's not fixing a broken fire hydrant. They, it looks newer, but I think certain people mistook that for like. That they were actually repaired. That doesn't mean that. The fire hydrant works, just cuz they painted it a new color. That's not what they got the grant for. They got the grant to repair them. So it, so it, so water comes out. That's what's supposed to happen with the fire hydrant.
I've never seen them come and turn, turn that fire hydrant on, on my corner, on a block. Does it really work? Or we have to find out when something happens?
You have to find out when there's a fire.
Right, but it might have got a nice paint job, but then again, see, that's where I'm wondering where all this stuff needs to be audited. So, but if you got the grant, then where where'd the rest of the money go? So, I I'm wondering, are they applying for grants and doing projects based on how they feel they could take money from it?
They're applying for grants and paying the people. That's why he said to me, y'all worried about the finances, but guess what? The workers still getting paid, they they checks ain't stopping. Yeah, cuz every time you apply for a grant, you're taking that money. And probably unre, it's probably restricted funds, you making it unrestricted, so you can put it in a generating, a general operating budget. So you can pay people, and I he, I bet you, he applied for that grant now, he ain't gonna get it the next time, I tell you that. And that's how that worked. You won't be able to apply for it again until we get some audited financials. So it sound good now, but tick tock, tick tock.
Yes, that's what I'm hoping.
You notice how he said, yeah, I don't plan to sit on this seat long. Yeah, yeah, I bet.
Oh, he knows that, okay.
He knows.
As long as he knows it, as long as he knows.
You never know. I don't trust them.
No, but the way he said that, like he was either gonna run for something bigger, or he outta here, or you know, he don't know. Taking that grant money, they unrestricting the funds, they putting it somewhere else so they can continue to get paid, and it's it's good until it ain't. Cuz I guarantee you, if Harvey run out of money and them ACHs don't hit. And you gonna hear about it on the news. But I thought everything was good, and what is the news gonna say? Harvey City workers are, um, you know, protesting cuz they haven't gotten paid. But in addition to that, we don't know the true finances of the city because it's the treasure, there's no treasurer's report.
First of all, they're too, they'll be too afraid to say anything.
They'll say something that ACH don't hit.
Well, right, I would say probably the only reason they all are, most of them are staying quiet right now. Right, they're there for the money, cuz I bet you if most of them had an opportunity to work somewhere else. I mean, at least how I've seen Clark treat people behind the scenes publicly and behind the scenes, I I wouldn't. I would not work for him, you know, unless I absolutely had to. I bet you, if some of them had some better job offers, they would probably. And they struggle with that. We have very high turnover in all the city departments.
And the ones that standing there loud and proud, they can't go nowhere else. You can't go nowhere else. With your chest out, cuz you know, ain't nobody else hiring you after this.
Like all those officers that Clark hires, the rejects. And then that's why they're loyal to him, right? Like the guy that choked me. Because Country Club Hills fired him. He, he lied under oath. Where else is he gonna get a job?
Where you going? Comptroller, where you going? And the more I, I. I think he worked in advertising at one point, but maybe I need to do my research about that, cuz that name sounds familiar, but not because of being the comptroller. But anyway.
You worked in advertising?
I, in in a previous life, yes, I did work in advertising.
Where did you work?
Uh, I worked at a multicultural agency, um, we we worked on different projects with different uh big companies that you see. Every day in your local.
He's working Leo Burnett.
Are you working Leo Burnett?
Okay.
And we have to talk offline.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I have an idea. I think it's run by a black person.
You might be on to something.
Yeah, cuz I know, uh, Elroy used to work there, so I don't know if he went there, he's still there, but yeah, I get it. We talk.
Yeah, I was just like, that's how they doing. They, you you can't go nowhere else after this. Just like. Compared some of them folks in Dalton, you know you can't work nowhere after this. Especially ones that was loud and proud and standing up in solidarity with her, knowing what you doing is dead wrong.
For majority of those people were um older people. So they already are seniors, they already getting their senior's check. I know it's two, I was surprised, one of them they let go. But I'm sure he'll go do a, be a rapper somewhere. Fun fact, Mike, always with the fun fact. What are the two types of fire hydrant? I have no clue.
I don't know. Good question.
Good question, I don't know, I just know. Thank goodness, thank you. Oh, cool, that's good, thank you. Oh, okay, you're welcome, Crook County. Yes, so, you know, I hope we get to do this more often and to have these conversations, because it's important. A lot of people, YouTubers, don't wanna touch this conversation.
What touches, political things or just Harvey?
Uh, that's interesting. I wonder why.
Is it, is it not, is it not a moneymaker now? So, you know. Dalton, Tiffany, Henry was definitely, people was getting their numbers up off of that. And rightfully so, because she was, you know, she was put on a national platform for all of her foolishness, so. Makes sense that you would definitely um get your numbers up if your topic or anything centered around her was a part of. Videos and things of that nature. Um, but yeah, if if Harvey gets some more media play and. Spotlight on him, it would be interesting to see some of the YouTubers that, you know.
Cuz have you seen any?
Okay, so, yes, um.
Oh, Hannibal did some, okay.
Hannibal did something very early on. Writing the Tiffany stuff, and he made a video like, is the mayor of Harvey worse than Tiffany? Like, and this was during like the height of all of her things, so. I would give him that credit, and I think. He did, and maybe a couple others, I just, that one stands out to me.
Yeah, no, no one's been as consistent. Con just did, just did a few that were very good. Uh, she had, she had me on, um. This, yeah, no, I would say not as consistent as all, but I do invite people, I want YouTubers to come and cover Harvey. Um, and and just in general, my vision would be to have different channels and different YouTubers. To cover all the Southland, cuz there's so much crap, like I had people contacting me almost every day about, like I know District one sixty has issued. District two twenty seven, um, I had complaints from Poe, the town of Poezen, though the Poezen. Like, there's so much stuff I could not possibly cover at all, if even, you know what I mean, even if I were doing this full time. So, which I'm not even paid for any of this, I just do it cuz I enjoy it and I want the, I wanna see our communities be successful. But um, but yeah, if anyone's ever interested in covering this, like covering public meetings or corruption or anything. There's also like a lot of drama, so e- even if people are in it for the wrong reasons, if you just want views, cuz you make money this way or whatever. I'm not encouraging people to to be unethical, but I'm just saying, for the people that are like, oh, but there's no more Tiffany, like where am I gonna get my fix for drama? Chris Clark is extremely problematic and very dramatic, and there's stuff about him that this. We we don't even know the half of it. So like, if you want drama, if you want the. Aha moments, like come to Harvey, we have it for you. Like, you don't need a new Netflix show. You just need to follow Harvey.
Yes, and maybe in the next couple of weeks or months, that people start to see. Like, really the antics, like the smart mouth stuff he be saying, and smart.
Yeah, so, yeah, y'all thought Tiffany was, you know, crazy, just come on down to a hundred forty seven. But even more importantly, just getting politically involved, just go to your city council meetings. Even, I mean, overarching, just overall, just go, even, and I get it, people working multiple jobs and it's hard, but you still need to go. I would say people should make it a point to at least go to two. City council meetings throughout the year, just to kinda understand and see what's going on. And kinda get to understand who is who, who is your mayor, who is your alderman, or if if you're, if you're a city set up like that. If it's set up with trustees or commissioners, you know, whoever, you just need to know who those people are. You need to see them in real time. So I would always encourage people, even if you don't wanna get super deep involved in like politics and all of that nature, I would definitely say at least know. Who your um elected officials are, and so you can, um, I would say just go to a meeting twice a year, just to kinda see who is who. Um, because a lot of times, unfortunately, you only see them out when it's election time. And you wanna see them in real time, you wanna see them governing, and how do they govern, and how do they talk to people, and. What is a meeting like? Like, that should be, you know, something understandable, so I would encourage everyone to get involved.
When I was your age, I was not thinking about no politics. I was thinking about like my life kicking and, you know, having fun, but I wish I had really took it more serious when I was younger, cuz now. I understand the importance, apor- importance, importance, why does it sound funny? Um, uh, knowing about politics, about where I live, you know what I'm saying? Cuz it makes a difference. My kids won't even come back to Harvey. They said, no way, Jose, and they went to school in Harvey. Media design, work, editing, and music is being put together as speak, oh, oh, I'm just sorry.
Interesting.
Yes.
Oh, awesome.
It's, it's important to like, you know. Yeah, like you said, build up the community, and it's just gotta, a lot of times Harvey gets a bad rap. And it's just like, cuz the people won't come back and help build it up. But and also, some people have attempted, and I get it when you get a bad taste in your mouth from governance and. Trying to help and the doors being slammed in your face, or no one's getting back to you, it do, it can put a bad taste in your mouth. I ain't coming back to hell, they don't do nothing for me, and. Yeah, so. And not for the check, so.
Yes, I definitely understand, cuz I wish they would just be a part of the change. Especially going to school here, so but. Thorn, Thorn High School reunions. I said, wow, y'all for real.
Oh, wow, and I know people be rapping, I didn't, um, I ain't go to school in Harvey at all, born and raised here, but. I went to private school, pre-K through twelfth grade, so.
I could tell. Oh, okay, well, it's getting late, I need to get up in the morning. It was great, and I enjoyed this. And I hope that we all can do this again real soon, not before, at least once a week, get together, talk about it and.
We really, we should, we really should. And also because we, all three of us are residents, like how awesome is that? Do you realize that a lot of our politicians aren't even residents of Harvey?
Or Thornton Township.
So I'm just proud of us that it's like, like hello, we actually lay our heads here, you know, like I hear gunshots is.
Cuts off half the city every other night. I thought they had get away with that. I'm like, I dealt with that as a kid, I was like. I mean, it didn't bother me, but it was just like, why does it cut off the entire city? Like, literally from Harvey just out of all, like it cuts off.
Those good old CSX tracks, yeah.
Good night, Mike.
Not keep doing this, but yeah, sorry.
I hope I can be be able to get you all once a week, so we can make this a weekly conversation. And hopefully people will come and, you know, hear from us, actual resident. And to keep the conversation going and not let this be just one night after a meeting of craziness.
Oh, I love it. Well, Diana, you you can hold us accountable to that, okay? Please do.
Yes, and I wanna tell Crook County, thank you for the one ninety nine. Thank you so much, I appreciate it so much, and we definitely going to, I'mma hit you up and say, hey, are you available? I'd most likely be in the evening time, so we can keep talking about it and let's keep Harvey on people's minds. Cuz we gotta stop the foolishness, and you listen, what you, when's that big election to get him out again is? Twenty twenty seven. Yeah, we got, look, we got the millennial with the coins in the house, you know what I'm saying? We got the, which is, we say you're a realtor? And I'm just a person in living here.
Oh, no, 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 no. I, Ryan's the realtor, I work in finance.
No, I said, you, the coin, you you got the coins and Ryan's the realtor.
And then the voice, so we could just put it all together.
Well, no, you do like marketing, Diana, right? Or or what do you do?
All right, and I have my, I have a a notary business, a loan, I do loan loan signings. I'm a real estate agent as well, but I haven't really done anything with the real estate. With that, and I work, and I'm working on, I'm taking a course now to be a certified drug and alcohol counselor. Uh, advertising, cuz that was too much, but yes. So that's what I'm working on.
Ca- counseling.
My god, I'd love to to reuse Ascension and have that be like a, you know, transitional housing or or. Or veteran housing, or senior housing, or something, you know what I mean? Like, oh, we got so many needs in the community, like.
Veteran housing would be amazing, cuz I can, I mean, I appreciate there's more, but I can only think of like one or two veteran buildings that I know of. Two pretty decent new ones in the city, but I can't think of any others like south of like Seventy Ninth Street.
Yeah, one of our, one of our uh historical society members, yeah, cuz she shared in on on Facebook a project in Kankakee where they took an old building. And made basically like studios for veterans that, you know, live on their own.
That's what they should have did to that apartment building that they built by the police officer, should have made it a veteran home. You know.
Right.
I was, I was talking, and I don't know, I'm, I don't wanna say his name, and you may have heard this story before, but there is a. A gentleman that lives in Harvey, he lives in my ward, I didn't really realize that, but he, he's blind. And he was, how he became blind was it was a robbery, and he got pow pow in the face, and so he lost his sight. But he's still active in the community in Harvey now, still. He told me he wanted to, I don't know if you know, there's a church on Halsted that's now closed, been closed for a while, right before you go over to Bridge to Riverdale. He tried to get the building because he wanted to build and do a uh. A substance abuse facility there, but City of Harvey would not give him that property, and this man is blind, and he's still trying to. Uh, be a part of the change, so, you know, we gotta make some things different. So people who wants to make a change in Harvey are afforded to do so.
Yes, I agree. No, I totally agree. I totally agree, you Harvey ladies, you.
Yeah, I understand, for me also, and Ryan, I hope you're doing what I'm, again, I've, I, I, about your loss, I, you see, I say my condolences to you.
I do miss my baby, yeah. There's certain things I haven't, you know, I still have, I still have this little blanket that he would sit on when I was working on the couch, I had his little bed, but. It's progressing day by day.
Yes, I understand, and I wanna, I know Mandy's gonna jump off, and I wanna say thank you, Mandy, really, I do, truly, I do, cuz. I love when um the millennials give me a different perspective of of life, and you're so knowledgeable and have a a wealth of knowledge. And, you know, you, anytime, I can't wait that we keep this up and keep it going. I appreciate you both, and I appreciate you, Ryan, as well.
Thank you, no, thank you for what you're doing, and thank you for the opportunity to come on your platform and speak in this. Thank you for just being a voice, not just for Harvey, but for Thornton Township. Cuz like I said, super local information is important as well. And not just at the national level, but like super local, cuz this affects our everyday lives, and I think for so long. People really didn't pay attention to the Southland until Ms. Tiff Tiff came with her bulldozer, but now it's getting. It it it's a ripple effect in a good way that is now, it has sparked. Other people to say, well, let me go to my council, let me see what's going on here, what's going on in the Southland? With Northbrook compared to Harvey, like, what, what, you know, why is that? Vastly different incomes and vastly different home prices, but I think super local. Um, political voices are important, for or against doesn't matter, but just the information just being readily accessible for people. For or against doesn't matter, but just the information just being readily accessible for people. Cuz again, can't find none on the city's website, it reset, outside of the fancy newsletter. It's not on the website.
Pardon. Okay. Ryan, any last words?
Oh, no, just thank you, ladies. Yeah, thank, and and Diana, I'm so super pleased that you, uh, came out tonight, so. I hope you come out to every meeting. That would be great. I'd always love to see your face.
Okay, I'm definitely gonna do that. I'm work on it. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna come. Well, as soon as I feel uncomfortable, I'm leaving. Just saying.
Well, and also if you have a group of people like me and others, you know, to stick with, um, cuz I do believe in in, you know, it's like, it has to be a team approach. So even just like, I don't like anybody to walk out to their car by themselves or or, you know, things like that. Like, it it, it just is, it, it's, makes sense. Um, but it is important to know that we have people watching after each other.
Yes, I agree. All right. Well, let me go home. Yeah, I must, sweet dreams to you both, and I look forward to seeing you real, real soon.
Thank you, ladies. All right. Good night.
Good night. Good night. Well, I, first of all, I wanna say thank you all who was, twenty-three of you all who was able to hang on in here. We've been on here for four hours and fifty-one minutes and counting. I wanna say thank you all for hanging in there with me. I wanna say thank you for the rewind crew. I saw Prima Donna popped on in here, and I say thank you, thank you, thank you. It's a lot that needs to be changed. And listen, Crook County, let me put Crook County up here. Crook County? Let me put Crook County up here. If you haven't, please subscribe to Crook County's channel. It's informative, and we need the information that Crook County put out. Hey, it's like a strong person had that kind of name, I must say. Yes, I do. And again, I wanna thank my members, my subscribers, my mods who are in this, in the chat. Oh, Mike and I already went to sleep. But I wanna say thank you again, and thank you, thank you. And we're gonna keep the conversation going, just having grown up conversation, and we want to make, we want changes in our town. Just like Dalton, we want changes also. Well, on that note, I'm gonna say good night, and I'm gonna sign off. And I hope to see you later. And thank you, Crook County, Mike, Common Sense, everyone. And all the twenty-something in the chat who ain't saying nothing all night. Well, good night, and I'll talk to you later. Signing off.